He's coming in. Okay, you're good.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being flexible with us. We'll start this meeting now. It's September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three one zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two five, public meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting four at seven zero six P M. This is Breonna Sullivan, Co-Chair. Elevating the public acknowledgement. Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. Community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be the Nynna and Alutik homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. How could you please do the role of all?
Sorry, yes, Breonna Sullivan.
Present.
Mike Getcheton, yes, Jennifer Wingard. Brian Burnett.
Present online.
You have a form.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have any disclosures this evening?
I want to make standard disclosure on item fourteen. On the Girdwood Strategic Plan, as Chair of the Magic Group.
Thank you, Mike. We will continue the ruling that you would be recused from that item again. Anything else? Go for announcements next if there's nothing else. The Girdwood Valley Service Area Nonprofit Grant Presentation will be Monday, September thirtieth at seven P M. The parliamentary procedure training is Tuesday, October eighth. I believe the time was chosen today. The GBOS Rules and Procedure Work Session will be TBA. And MOA GBOS quarterly meeting is Monday, October twenty-eighth at four P M. This time, please. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand. Wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Next is the agenda revisions and approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion?
Yeah, to make some amendments. We obviously have a very long agenda tonight. There's a few things we can probably tidy up now. First amendment was is items twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty. Well, with item thirty, the deadline has already passed. We've taken action. And all the three items we discussed at our last special meeting, so I think they can come off the agenda. Move that we remove items twenty-five, which is agenda item LUC twenty-four oh nine dash zero seven. Item twenty-six, agenda item LUC twenty-four zero nine dash oh eight. And item thirty, agenda item LUC twenty-four oh nine dash oh nine. And maybe we can, these can be just addressed briefly and supervised for updates.
I'll second that.
Motion has been seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion on amendment?
Sorry, just point of clarification. It's twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty.
Thirty, correct. Hey, we can go by assent if there are no objections to that amendment. Any other revisions?
Again, for the sake of timing, I'm going to request that we, item seventeen, new and discussed GBOS rules and procedures. We have a, we're gonna have a work session scheduled later for that. There's no update today. And I'm afraid I've dropped the ball on number eighteen. I do not have anything to present. So request seventeen, eighteen, we just drop, or we bring back next month, rather we do it next month.
Okay, do we have second for that?
I will second that, and then I have a question about it.
Okay, great. Second and discussion.
Okay, on item number seventeen, so are are we saying that we don't, you don't want to discuss that at all, or we're not ready to schedule the meeting, or?
I was just saying, just postpone it for tonight. There's no, we could take it off the agenda now. It looks less intimidating. But we will have it on the agenda next month.
Okay.
So essentially, enabling it, yeah, we're postponing till next.
Hey, any other comments on that one? Can go by assent as to how that amendment? Seventeen, eighteen are off. Thanks.
Finally, because I'm in spring cleaning, but it doesn't, calendar doesn't agree. I just have a question on item twenty. This is really a question for Brett, if he's, or Brett or Matt, if they're online. Should we keep this on the agenda or can we postpone this as well? I know there's no, I don't think there's any action in front of us. But we can keep it on and discuss it and do an update, or we could just move it to next month. I don't mind that.
I, I could provide you with a short update.
Okay, so when we consult, can we do that in the, can we do that in the, in the committee updates? Under item eight?
Absolutely, yep.
In that case, I move to strike item twenty as well.
Good motion to strike item twenty to basically have an update from the or second for that. Thank you, Jennifer. Any further comments? Margaret.
I'm wondering about item twenty-two.
Same question.
I believe Bryce, yeah, Bryce is online and has his hand up on that one.
Okay, Bryce, could you clarify number twenty-two, please?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I'm, I'm a little confused, Margaret, on twenty-two. There's, I'll be there in person for this item. I don't understand the, the request to drop.
Oh, can I address it? So Bryce, I thought, I believe the question about this was that it has to be approved by, or that for us to view it as old business, it would be better to have it be voted on by LUC.
Okay, yeah, through the chair. Yeah, it probably needs to go through LUC, and so we can discuss it at that point once it passes LUC.
Okay, thank you. So that mean, I'm inferring that it's removed for tonight? And have it on next month, twenty-two? Motion seconded.
Second.
Okay. Moving by assent on that one? Okay, any other items beside approving agenda with all those amendments? Back to the agenda. There are no objections. Yes, it looks less lengthy now, so hopefully we can save paper as well. Okay, agenda is approved, and we'll go to the minutes approval. We have a, on this agenda, we have two minutes listed. Would you like to make a motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
Hey, any other comments on these? Margaret?
I was also able to provide minutes from last Friday's meeting. You haven't had an awfully long time to take a look at them, but if you wanted to approve them, you can.
I've obtained a motion to approve the minutes from Friday's meeting. I have read them. Sure, I will add them to the motion.
And agree, second.
Second and agrees, motion by Jennifer. No objections. Okay, that's September, it's the thirteenth, yeah, Friday. Thirteenth meeting, minutes are approved. All the minutes now have been approved. Now, our number two, the letter of non-objection, this is part of the consent agenda. It's MOA planning and zoning item.
Yeah, so can I just, I think the intent here was to have, if we don't hear anything from land use or GBOS to the contrary, we would issue a letter of non-objection to any items coming in front of planning and zoning. So in this particular, well, in this case, I think it's only part of the excellence. So this, I would say, probably item, we jump into item three, we just agree. For that case. That would be the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to have a letter of non-objection to item number three. Do we have a second for the non-objection? Are you able to second this? Motion? Not sure what land used it with this.
Didn't take up action on it. Just heard that it was made aware that there was no action from land use. So the intent, in effect, not responding and giving a letter of non-objection have the same impact. It's just giving a letter of non-objection means we're paying attention. So it's really simple. It's more symbolism than the actual impact, direct impact on the case itself.
Amber? Sorry, my only hesitation about this is, to be quite frank, I'm not actually paying that close of attention, at least to this particular item. I haven't reviewed this, and so that's why I'm not signing the motion, not because I disagree in principle, but because I just haven't had a chance to look at it. And so I worry that being part of the letter of non-objection puts a stamp of approval that I, I just haven't looked at enough to. But I, I agree in principle, this is a great idea, and I just, I'm not there personally.
So we're like, make two of them to do this.
Right.
Okay. While it's on the consent agenda, do we need to move to having another meeting?
I think we, I think we should just, the motion is seconded.
No action. I'll take that as no action. Okay, we will go to presentations. Resolutions of service this evening, Girdwood Fire and Rescue.
You have, hopefully before you, coming up to, our two resolutions, so I'll talk to whichever one comes first. Um, as a combination, the fire department, we have members that are with us for a short time. Often, the life of a volunteer is two to five years with Girdwood Fire and Rescue. We have a number of long-serving Girdwood firefighters moved on to new professional careers and opportunities in two thousand and twenty-four. It was not a case of not wanting to be part of the department. It was just a case of people that had been with us all through their nursing schooling and then became nurses. We're having a, you know, it's challenging sometimes to juggle being an emergency room nurse and still making your fire department hours. One of our members up there was promoted to an Alaska Airlines captain position. Again, hard to juggle those things. And Stuart Perry was hired on by Anchorage Fire. Marco's gone on to do, to do a physician assistant school. So, you know, everybody's, we are just incredibly fortunate as a community to have had these hardworking people do a lot of great compassionate emergency medical care and firefighting for us. And I wish them nothing but the best for their future careers, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to recognize their service to the community. So that's this one. I don't know if anybody else.
Yeah, one of us could read it in the record. Is that to read this one or? I could.
Oh, I'll read, I'll read this one.
Yes, I'll read this one. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, Resolution of Appreciation for Samantha Hicks, Nessa Cutler, Stuart Perry, Marco Rivera, Dylan Robinson, and Tom Cubitt in fighting service as Girdwood community firefighters and emergency medical technicians. Whereas a number of long-serving Girdwood firefighters moved on to new professional careers and educational opportunities in two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas Samantha Hicks, Nessa Cutler, Stuart Perry, Marco Rivera, Dylan Robinson, and Tom Cubitt collectively served the community of Girdwood over twenty-four years of community fire and emergency medical service. And whereas these individuals stepped up to volunteer, to be trained, to serve, and save the lives of their fellow Girdwood community members over many years of service. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors expresses appreciation for the fire community service of Samantha Hicks, Nessa Cutler, Stuart Perry, Marco Rivera, Dylan Robinson, and Tom Cubitt. Passed and approved this sixteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four.
And so I'll drop, I'll make, I'll make a copy of this, and I have a plaque for each of them, and I'll drop them sort of as a surprise at their house, so. That's the first one.
Give me just four.
Yeah, let us, that was the motion into the record.
So I'll second it.
Second, go by consent. Unanimous consent on that. You too, Weston, can bring that one forward.
And then I was hoping for the next one, Richard Perry would be here, but I don't see him, and I don't know if he's online or not, possibly not. So really, what can you say about somebody that's given fifty years of fire service to the municipality, right? Rich Perry probably needs to have his whole, a whole Rich Perry week designated by the community of Girdwood and Anchorage, I would suggest. But in light of that, I'd like to suggest this be a great appreciation of service. So Rich started in Girdwood here in nineteen seventy-two. And he was with Girdwood until he started with Anchorage Fire Department, where he was a firefighter, a paramedic, and an EMS battalion chief. And then he retired from AFD, and then on the same day, decided to start back with Girdwood as deputy chief and currently serves as engineer paramedic. And he's obviously served as a mentor for generations of firefighters and for EMS. I can remember many times where we would be doing a medic meet, and I was in the back of the ambulance, and Rich Perry worked and would do a medic meet with us and provide lifesaving care to people. And he's just a wonderful person. I can't say enough good things about him. I think it's just, not only has he given his fifty years of service to the municipality of Anchorage, but he's also inspired both his children to work, one as a police officer and was as a firefighter in the municipality. And, and Will, who was a, was a firefighter here also before he became a police officer. So he's really inspired a bunch of, bunch of people. He still continues to inspire people and still continues to provide lifesaving care with his paramedic skills on calls. So I just want to recognize the amazing fifty years of fire service of Richard Perry has provided the municipality of Anchorage. And then we are gonna do a small recognition of him on Saturday. And if you'd like more details, just come see me out.
Thank you. Mike, would you like to read this?
I would like to read this into the record. It's, it's weird to say Richard rather than Rich. Enjoy. Girdwood Board of Supervisors, Resolution of Appreciation for Richard Perry's fifty years of fire service in the municipality of Anchorage. Whereas Richard Perry started with Girdwood Fire Department in September nineteen seventy-two. And whereas Rich Perry had a successful career with Anchorage Fire Department as a firefighter, paramedic, and EMS battalion chief from November nineteen eighty-two to February two thousand and five. And whereas Richard Perry rejoined Girdwood Fire in February two thousand and five, deputy fire chief, and currently serves as an engineer paramedic. And whereas Richard Perry has served as a mentor to generations of firefighters and has inspired his children to also have careers in public safety for the municipality of Anchorage. And whereas Richard Perry has touched the lives of thousands of municipal residents throughout his compassionate paramedic care. And whereas our community of Girdwood is a better place because of Richard Perry. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors expresses appreciation for the amazing fiftieth year of fire service Richard Perry has provided to the municipality of Anchorage. Passed and approved, second.
Thank you, Mike. That was our motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments? Like to thank you, Weston, for bringing this forward. It's really exciting. And the legacy that he leaves. Any objections to this? I don't think so. Go by unanimously consent, and we are approving that unanimously.
So is it to move for a bridge?
I think there should be Richard Perry, like, I'm to Chief Weston.
Okay, next we have Chief Case, with ED. I see you online, Chief Case. And welcome. And as I introduce you, I just wanted to remind that we do have a Girdwood Valley Service Area Joint MOA meeting on October twenty-eighth. So that's also a great time to have you join. So, good evening.
Thanks, Madam Chair, for giving me just a few minutes. I just want to introduce myself in month three. So I wanted to at least show my, my face to the board of supervisors. I have met with the, the chief that's providing law enforcement services for you guys. And, and we'll probably meet, probably on a monthly or every, on a monthly basis, just to kind of go over any of, any things that we can potentially help with. Obviously, most of the law enforcement services are not provided by the Anchorage Police Department, but investigations of any depth will, will come and handle those. And obviously, we're out there on the highway. So I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm available if you guys have questions or, you know, things you want, some concerns that you want to push our way. I'm more than happy to answer those questions. And, you know, if you need me out for any of your meetings in person to, to kind of address any of those issues, I'm more than happy to do that as well.
Thank you, Chief Case. Are there any questions? Mike?
One, one more question. Thank you very much for, for coming to see me. Do you got a question about the Seward Highway service? I know your department is stretched pretty thin at the moment. Is it, is the highway service something you still feel your, the department is capable of doing when your numbers are low?
Yeah, we're sixty-one officers down, sixty-one sworn officers right now. We, our traffic unit is the primary unit that takes care of the Seward Highway as well as grants that we have that are, that are run, overtime details, grants funded through the state. So there are a couple of different ways that we provide those services. We do, we do still do a decent amount of, of enforcement, particularly in that corridor, and certainly the traffic collisions that, that we see all too frequently along that corridor. So right now, we're still maintaining our traffic unit when one of the reasons is for service being provided on the Seward Highway. And, you know, if we ever get to the point where we're gonna have to, you know, pull services back to, from things like the traffic unit or impaired driving unit, they also get down there and, and provide some enforcement along the, the Seward Highway. That's when we'll probably have to start having a little more challenging conversations on whether or not we can provide the services on the Seward Highway. Right now, we're maintaining some service because we, you know, we recognize it's dangerous to stretch a highway, and we want to be responsive to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Case? All right. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you.
Next is our legislative report. Senator Kathy Geiselman is online. Lauren, next.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Madam Chair. Thanks for the time. I appreciate always attending these meetings, and I appreciated the resolutions recognizing the fire and rescue. I don't have anything burning to report tonight, so I'm gonna give you this time back for the meeting. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Senator Geiselman? Go see any hands. Hey, thank you very much. And then we have our mayor's office. No, assembly members, I see one here in the room. Come on up. Randy, thank you.
Thanks. I'll be, I'll be fairly brief. We have the new administration still kind of getting their feet underneath them. So far, things seem to be positive. Appreciate the professionalism and the engagement from the administration. We're in budget season, so we reviewed the hundred-and-twenty-day memo, going through, making sure that your priorities and priorities of all of Anchorage are captured in the CIP list. Also, as I'm the ex-officio, officio member of AEDC, so deeply involved in the project Anchorage, which I think you had a presentation here already. Yep. So if you have any questions around that, I could try to answer that. Just touch on a clout, now. We sent two representatives to the governors, at the governor's request, for recruitment, asking for two representatives from each involved party with relation to help him decide what to do with the nineteen ninety-one agreement. We also, let's see, passed AR two thousand and twenty-four dash two seven eight. That's the alcohol tax strategic plan. So it's in line with the proposition that was passed around alcohol tax. But it also is a plan for how we're gonna spend that money. It's a living document, and it's better than having no plan at all. So we have actually a framework for where those funds will be used. We passed AO two thousand and twenty-four dash eighty-one. That's requiring entities that provide tax data on short-term rentals to provide a certain data, provided it's legal, what we did. So far, we believe it is, and we look forward to gathering that data. Passed AO two thousand and twenty-four dash eighty-two, requiring scrap dealers to start recording who brings in catalytic converters. Trying to stem that crime. There's a wave of crime in Anchorage of cutting out catalytic converters and taking them in for scrap. The other thing, we met today on Crow Creek. So that, you probably work with it that I am, but the road is owned by DOT, MOA, potentially Chegat State Forest. Difference between maintenance for summer, winter, as well as capital projects. We're trying to sort through the ownership with the intent to help with summer maintenance of the road, which is gonna require capital maintenance to raise the road up, because it's been graded so many times. It's down to the base layers and culverts are showing through. And then in the wintertime, I know the residents prefer to do their own maintenance and prefer not to become part of DVSA. So we'll keep sorting that through. There's flat grants, congressional-directed spend that we hopefully can get for the road. However, we need to understand the ownership first. That's the first step. And then, you probably cover it later, but the Federation Community Council is gonna have training this, this year. Nine twenty-three is the next training, seven, eight P M. at Wildon-Marchston Theater. And I will stop there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Salt. Any questions?
It's kind of a question to comment, but just wanted to point out the twenty-two forty-eighty-one, the thing that gives, that makes short-term rental platforms ask them to respond my data. I think that for us, one of the most crucial things is it's going to include kind of locations at code level, tax receipts. So we just, at the moment, just see a single number for the whole municipality. Our belief is that about thirty percent of that twenty-five to thirty-seven, it comes from Girdwood. And this will clarify that, how much it comes from Girdwood properties, which will be a huge step forward, I think, for understanding. And hopefully, the understanding, the assembly in the administration as well, scale of the issue.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. How was it, Tex? Want, want to identify, is there a problem? You think to my feet, and it'll give us the data where we can present a little bit better, so.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I have to leave at seven fifty, so. Thank you.
Ever six fifty. Yeah, I did, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you've done a ton of work with STR stuff, and it's really nice to see some progress being made. And starting out with data collection is as good a start as any, you know, so fake it, we don't get it.
Yeah, and in full disclosure, I mean, I own several STRs, none of them in the state. And so I've been exposed personally to different legislation, and, and whatever you say, there's good and bad in every piece of legislation. And what you say, STRs may be bad, they, they also have a lot of benefits too, so.
Right, you have one more frame behind you. Grace?
Hi, Grace Gray. My question is, Randy, if you could elaborate on what, what the problem is that are, we're trying to solve with the legislation regarding the STRs? You mentioned that you think there might be a problem?
That they're consuming houses.
Understand.
They're letting them have the mental stock. That's, that's the concern. We certainly, President Ray, why is that simple choosing? Their measures have been pretty extreme to correct the problem. And it, it backfired in some cases. So we really don't understand. First, is the real problem? People go out and say, hey, there's a problem. Let's have a data that shows.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much, Randy, for coming up. And Zach Johnson. Tonight, Anchorage School Board liaison, Carl Jacobs. Welcome, if you're available.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Carl Jacobs here with the AST School Board. Just a couple of quick updates, and as always, I'm happy to answer your questions and then move aside and let you continue on your agenda. As I mentioned last month, I believe, the board thus far in the school year is focused on our three main board priorities, which are driven by community feedback. Those are increasing, increasing reading proficiency at the K-three level, increasing math proficiency on state assessments, and then addressing and ensuring all students are college career and life-ready. This month, the board is diving deep into the CCL work, specifically by looking at data related to the number of students on track to graduate. We use our first meeting to initially review the data of each month, and the second meeting to do a deep dive and ask questions of administration and, and ask how we can better support them and ensure that we're holding them accountable to providing the best possible supports and learning environments for our teachers and students. With that said, you, our presentations that we look at and all the data that we review is posted online at ASDKtwelve.org/schoolboard. You're welcome to review those PowerPoints, watch along the meetings with us as those are streamed on YouTube and then recorded in, in a permanent location. With that said, the, the other item the board is focused on is in preparation for our next budget cycle. For FY, it would be the FY twenty-six budget, is a right-sizing effort to examine how we can reduce the district footprint. For those who have closely followed ASD enrollment, for a significant, significant portion of the last decade, there have been a, a slow decrease in student population due to a number of reasons. And the district is examining if we can better use or utilize our facilities to ensure that we're providing the best uh, to ensure that we're providing the best possible educational supports to our educators um and providing the best possible level of service to families and students. With that said, um, there is a survey that was just uh, announced today by the district. I will ensure I, I put the link to that uh in the chat here in this meeting. Uh, would encourage everyone to take that. It's helping develop a rubric that the board will use to uh determine what facilities um are best to consider retaining and then what facilities may be utilized for another purpose. Um, there are some uh, personally, I think there are some exciting possibilities such as uh utilizing an, uh, an extra facility for a charter school or optional program. Um, or I, I personally have been involved in Proposition fourteen and um, which is the proposition that passed in April of last year uh to utilize marijuana tax funds for uh supporting the childcare sector in the municipality. Um, there is a potential intersection between excess capacity in elementary schools within the MOA uh and utilizing um a portion of those buildings uh for childcare centers, um, which could be transformational for the sector and provide families a unique opportunity of having one drop off for a childcare um age youth as well as uh, a youth that attends elementary school. Uh, districts also in the lower forty-eight have utilized uh childcare facilities uh, to provide uh, within a district, house within a district school, to provide free or reduced childcare, um, which can act as a significant retention and recruitment benefit, especially um in a scenario like Alaska where our educators are the only uh, uh, education professionals in the nation without a defined benefit retirement plan uh or full uh social security benefits. Uh, so more information there in the months ahead, but please consider taking the survey. Again, I'll put a link to that in the chat. I'm just, takes a few minutes. There's just a few questions there. Lastly, just a couple of policy notes. Um, I mentioned last month, I believe, that we um implemented, or we were on the path to implementing a parental notification regarding um, the option to report concerns of harassment, bullying, and intimidation anonymously. Uh, that board policy amendment passed unanimously, so was really proud of that. Uh, so that notification will go out to parents, um, staff and students uh, twice per year, advising them of all the ways that they can report concerns um in those arenas. Um, and then the other item that the board is addressing uh here as soon as this Tuesday, then will likely pass in early um October, is a board policy revision that's associated with ways to increase civic engagement. Uh, the board policy that's related to um patriotic exercises and observances. With all that said, our next meeting is this upcoming Tuesday, uh, so tomorrow at six P M. Um, would be glad to answer any questions. Again, appreciate the opportunity to brief the uh, the G-Boss tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Are there any questions? The board? Okay, I don't see any questions in the room or online. So thank you very much for the update. Next is HLVAC report, Tim Sherman, which I see here in the package. The only thing that we would need to revise is that a uh, HLV meeting this month is not happening. It is going to be in October. Anything else on this from anyone? Okay, we'll go to supervisor reports. Uh, Sterling in the room, does anyone have a report? Denver, do you like to go?
Yes, I would actually. Um, some of that is not directly connected to land use, but I wanted to say that um I happened into a um, Seward Highway stakeholder meeting with DOT, and so I wanted to recognize their um continued engagement with uh the community and uh, the other related communities as well. It sounds like they're meeting with Indian and Bird, and I, I do really think they're trying to do a lot of community outreach about the state of that highway. Um, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them and they have another stakeholder meeting coming up later in September. I don't know um where, how we're gonna end up shaking out with who ends up being road supervisor. I don't know as soon as it's gonna be killing, but I don't know how that works. Um, I also wanted to say, uh, Mike and I worked together on the Project Anchorage mission and so that did go in since we removed it from the agenda. I just want to mention uh that uh, that went in as approved at the end of uh, or at, at last Friday's work session, uh prioritizing the uh RV park development and uh cemetery. And um, I believe we have preliminary procedures on the agenda, so I will get, I will do that later. That's.
Thank you. Mike, you have.
Couple of quick things. Um, two of the items we, uh, we dropped from tonight are items that came up in our special meeting on Friday um, about section line easement, um, that NSTAR is uh working on and developing. Um, because we came to a different conclusion from LUC, uh, we will be providing, the co-chairs will be providing a letter back explaining uh, the, the situation uh to LUC. That'll be available shortly. Um, I was gonna mention the uh, the short-term rental um change that uh has already been, Randy has already explained in detail. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention at the recent meeting, recent assembly meeting, there was discussion about um a tax exemption for multifamily housing, a transportation-supported corridor. Um, and they have been defined in various parts of Anchorage Bowl, but the whole of Girdwood is also a transportation um corridor. We have free public transportation just about everywhere within the um, within the lower valley. Um, so there is a possibility of uh future uh step. Introducing a similar kind of exception in future. Um, and the other thing I was gonna mention is I'll be uh turning a, a conference next month on Keenview Resort Community or Gateway Community uh planning and particular system housing. So I'm forward to learning a lot of stuff there and I'll bring back what I can.
Thank you, Mike. For my supervisor report, I would just like to mention that Saldway Services said they would continue the Thursday operation at the transfer station, so, and the numbers are looking nice and steady compared to all the other days of the week. Thursdays are huge, so thank you, everyone, for uh going with that. Then the next thing I was going to say was uh alcohol tax was brought up at the first P SAC meeting that was recent, so there may be some on that pretty soon. Anything else I have is in the packet regarding NSTAR and that is another subject. Brian Burnett, do you have anything for your reports?
Nothing from me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now move on to service provider, sorry, committee updates. Three minutes each, items not on the agenda, but in its case might be on the agenda that we revised and of interest to the community or threat.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, so yeah, real quickly, I guess the STR uh topic, since we're not gonna cover that necessarily in the agenda, the GHGC, the Housing Committee, has been uh now we are normalizing the language that uh we had that uh we ran through the LUC. Um, and we're putting together a final sort of framework in how we would then have STR registration within the service area. And I just kind of wanted to comment a little bit. I, I did hear, you know, the question, why uh are we looking at STR registration? Um, and I think that it's, it is contrasting with the reasons that Assembly has been looking at STR registration. Um, we recognized in our committee work here that we have a substantial percentage of the STRs that are in the municipality. Um, we also have long-term rental market challenges when it directly relates to short-term rentals. But we also recognize that we are unique in that short-term rentals are necessary for our uh outdoor uh destination and resort area um to complement uh all of the folks that do come down and enjoy recreating in Girdwood. So that's why we're looking at it and we seized the moment when uh the Assembly uh, and I guess the municipality uh did not implement STR um registration regulations. So the short of this is, we're working on the language and uh we have found a way to use uh Title twenty-one, Chapter nine, where STRs would be then a right to use within particular zoning districts. So uh, we'll run that back through LUC hopefully next month. We'll get that out of committee and move it back to LUC for a final look at uh the language and what that looks like. And then we hope to bring that back to G-Boss for uh final approval and support as that uh would move up the chain for Assembly approval, since it would be Title twenty-one, Chapter nine changes. We're also working on in committee uh sort of a status report of what we've done over the last year. And we're uh placing that with the backdrop of what we've created as the Housing Implementation Plan, so I look forward to hopefully getting a report card up to G-Boss on our activities. And uh also, just a brief note, the committee has not made any decisions regarding consultant uh support at this time. We were talking about the topic and I know that it remains on the agenda, the Housing Implementation Plan and the, and uh as a topic for hiring a consultant, but I wanted to just sort of remind this is not uh necessarily come out of committee yet. We're still talking about it, so. And if I've missed everything, anything at all, maybe Matt's on, but I think that should cover the things not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Brett. Next, any other committees online have a report outside of the agenda? Okay, go to status of proposed Girdwood developments. Would you like to highlight anything?
Um, I think we'll. The, the main thing in here, we've just updated it for this month. Uh, the main thing in here is the uh, the NSTAR uh approval from DNR for the section line easement. Um, there are a couple of other small changes and I listed all the other planning applications that we're going through. So if there's any questions, I'll take now, just contact me offline.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. And then regarding NSTAR, uh Sterling Locas said that they have a public communication person named Lindsay Hobson and her email is in the packet. So they would like to continue communicating and are taking no action until the appeal process is over and to tell DNR issues anything else. So they have no information to share with an update and there will be no construction this year as it is this point in this year. So it will be next year if it happens. And as they know more, they will let us know. Go to service committee reports then. Chief Weston.
Uh, so uh, I wanted to share, there's a photo of, can you pick Rich Perry out of the photo? Who wants to go?
Beard.
Yes, the one holding the, the um, the helmet, uh, the silver helmet is uh Rich Perry. So. Uh, anyway, uh, so uh, we're having a badge ceremony. It's gonna be probably twelve thirty, not noon now um at, but if anybody wants to come for a fire station tour at twelve, at noon on Saturday, which is a very busy day in our community. Um, we are giving firefighter one badges to uh a number of individuals that have finished their firefighter one. We have a few more that are still working on their completion requirements, but we will be doing the first uh four or five um, on the twenty-first and also recognizing Rich Perry. Um, we received six new follow-up mem- new member applications. Um, and uh, we actually also received one more today. So um, we're going to be doing those interviews um in a couple of weeks. Uh, Engine Forty-One, uh, the bad news is it's now delayed for one or two years by a manufacturing delay. Um, so although it's sitting there on the books, uh, it's probably not gonna be a couple of more years due to manufacturer delays. This is something across the board that's affecting um, all the fire departments that have ordered equipment. It's frustrating, but there's not much we can do. Um, the big news was we had the semi extraction from Ternigan Arm and successfully um rescued that individual. He dropped by later in the week uh to check in and thank the crew, so that was really nice. And then on a, on um, September ninth, we had an ISO evaluation. Um, and they come um every five years or so to do an evaluation. We're currently a two-four. I believe we will stick and hopefully I think we give a good presentation enough that we will remain a two-four. So we're a two in the hydrogen areas and a four in the areas that don't have hybrids, and that affects your insurance. If you've ever bought a new house, they'll ask you what your ISO rating is for your communities, for your area, the community. Um, September, we're slow so far, not gonna complain. Slow is okay. Um, uh, in uh August, we were also slow, also good, not complaining, because we had those couple of months in summer, which we had twice as many calls that we normally do. Our normal call volume is about thirty, thirty-one calls a month. Um, it's slowed down considerably. Um, things that were new, obviously or unique, was the semi in the inlet. Uh, and we had a bear spray exposure and then we had two calls for a bat in the house. So um, which uh, I think now we're up to four bats in houses calls. So that's kind of unique. Um, just a reminder that bats will go outside. Uh, you have to leave the windows open and, you know, maybe turn off the lights. Let the bats go. Uh, and so uh, yeah, we might put out some, some social media information about bats. Uh, just because it's odd, it's unique. Obviously, bats aren't what Anchorage Fire pays us to do. Um, but I think it's good community service that we will call, come if you need us. Um, and then I just got back from uh two days at a conference uh for Girdwood and Fire where there was six hundred, it's an international conference, six hundred female firefighters were there, hosted by the San Diego, and it was so fun. I was on a panel with all the big metro chiefs. So there was the uh, Los An- uh, just formerly, just retired Los Angeles Fire Chief, the Sandy, San Francisco Fire Chief, a Baltimore Fire Chief, and a couple of other very big metro, like Maryland-type fire chiefs in Girdwood Fire. And so it was, so it's like, you know, and they all manage over a thousand personnel on their fire departments. And for some reason, they stuck me on there too with that panel, on that panel discussion. And it was so fun to just uh represent Girdwood. And so I was sort of honored to do that, but it was just so funny about which, which thing is totally different than everyone else. Um, but it was just a great and wonderful experience. So that was super fun. So I was trying to represent Girdwood. Um, yeah, and that's it for my report. Any questions?
Any hinge from the line of metros about how to deal with bats?
No, I did not mention the bats. I did when I mentioned, when they all introduced themselves and then I introduced myself as being from Alaska and having the, you know, the deadliest part of the highway and all that stuff. Everybody went woo in the audience. I thought, ah. So that was kind of fun. But anyway.
I, I'm just curious what a wreck water evaluation is.
Uh, wreck water is when someone's uh standing in the inlet uh in Ternigan Arm and on the mud flats. And so they'll call us out to go look at them and think, see if they're stuck or not. So if somebody's on the mud flats, we get a wreck water evaluation. So that actually happens, it happens not uncommonly, especially in summer, lots of those. So.
Hey, thank you, Chief Weston. Take care of your reports, all of your service representing us. Uh, police chief Ashay.
Uh, spoke chief says this evening, he is unable to can, he's helping with the apartment issue, but he, he did send uh the updated stats for uh up to, through August, and in August, they had three hundred and twenty-four calls for the Girdwood Service Area. Um, and they also share the calls that they have for Whittier as well. So that's in the packet here, but you can see all the calls for this year um, in there. So um, you know, most of their calls uh relate to uh area and business security checks, so when they're doing patrols um, along those lines, but they have a variety of things in there. They are fully staffed. Um, and uh, they've been attending and working, uh, getting to know the new Public Safety Advisory Committee as well. Um, so uh, they're ready to switch over to winter and get focused on that. But uh, for the most part, he didn't have a lot to report. Uh, one thing we are working on right now is uh parking enforcement and um we're working in a, a possible partnership with the Anchorage Development, the Easy Park, um, and uh, working through their ticketing system. That's what APD works through. Um, so uh, I'm Chief West, or Chief Ashay on that, uh, to get that sorted out and we might have that in place by end of year. So, um, so that's one item we're trying to improve for service.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle via Ashay? Kyle, okay. Thank you. Uh, next is you, Kyle, Patrick Rhodes, wreck.
Sure. Um, there's here. Um, I won't spend too much time on this. I'll try to hit the big things. Uh, we are making great progress on the Winter Creek Suspension Bridge at Glacier Creek. Uh, we have had a site visit. We'll have another one here shortly. Um, we're trying to get through all the small details of how to set things up for the contractor. So the unknowns are known, so that when we do bid this, we have a very good detailed uh brochure that we give them, which tells them all the details like staging, what we expect, what's our equipment they should probably be considering to bring in, access to the work locations, everything along those lines. So um, and then the engineering design team is working through all the caux and uh uh, and then having uh internal uh peer review on uh as they move along. So trying to find as uh efficient build as possible and also uh the smallest helicopter that we can possibly use. Um, because there'll be a lot dependent on that. So that's moving along great. Um, we did receive.
We did receive uh applications for the nonprofit grants and that's in the packet as well, you can see who applied for this year and we'll be working through that. Um as we move forward, there'll be presentations for GBOS um on uh coming up. And then um we've had some success with grants, uh we did uh receive a um. A hundred and three thousand dollar uh land water and conservation grant for the Lions Club that we did in partnership with them to build the new pavilion in Lions Club Park. Um and they have raised close to twenty thousand on their own uh to be our matching, so we will be working through that. Um this year and hopefully uh be able to build, but it's a two year grants, we can get it done by the end of twenty seven, which is great. And then we just received the word this afternoon that we we approve for the recreational trails program grant. Um after a bunch of wrangling uh through some details, we did an approve and uh we'll be using that to improve the middle of Ditterod. Uh we had a grant request there for a hundred and seventy nine thousand, um so we're very excited. We submitted both those grants at the same time and we just basically in this last couple of weeks finally got word from the state that we got approved on those. And then as well, we received a uh Rasmussen Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand towards the bridge. Um which uh we're very appreciative of and we want to give big thanks to Chris von Inhofe who helped us um with that grant and promoting that and really getting us in front of it. So um and then we also received a grant from the National Forest Foundation for the bridge as well, so we're working through that. And we'll be playing for another two hundred thousand dollar grant here in the fall for the next round of RTP, so uh we're working through quite a bit there, so. Um uh lots going on and we're excited to see these come in. Um it's always social media and the website, the minutes and all the agendas are well taken care of, thanks to Margaret, uh you can find them there, the links. And uh well, other newsletters, so switching over the roads, uh we completed significant amount of drainage work improvement on the road system. Our next big work is to work on Old West and Gerwood and then ditch around the backside of the gas station. Uh we are waiting for the Chugash Electric um to release the gravel that we're going to purchase over there, so they're almost done over there. And so soon as Western gets that, we'll be uh moving that gravel in for our stockpile and also right there to. Old West to help with the drainage improvements there, we've had a development of a lot there uh that cut out uh some of the old drainage that they had there, so we have to reroute. Uh some of the drainage in that area to help the residents, so we'll be working through that here uh coming up um in uh September, early October. Now we have taken, uh we've put a PO out for the purchase of the um uh E chips that we use for our winter traction. Uh surprisingly, that was up over ten dollars a ton this year um from our two thousand three twentieth cost and we've seen that go up and it's directly related to trucking. Um it may be a little bit of salt, but for the most part, uh the majority of the increase is related to trucking, trucking costs have gone up significantly. Um for side dumps and end dumps, so uh so that drove up our prices for this year. So in the end, we end up having to purchase less, if we need to get some more, we'll be looking at maybe purchasing some in February. Uh but we're trying to work through our pile, we had a bit left over from last year, so we want to try to work down a whole pile and then bring in a fresh start next year. Uh and then uh major updates, we do have um uh the new fish culvert, we're working through the EPA application for the Ruane project. That's moving along, working with AWO on that to get that completed, uh it's a tedious process as is federal managed grants, so we're getting everything they need. And then uh we have put out and awarded to caliber construction, the Davos Road and Aliaski Creek Culvert, that'll be a fish culvert there. Uh that will not start till twenty five, uh spring of twenty five because of the uh timeline it takes to get the special culvert that will go in there, so. Um that's being, but we had a pre-construction meeting with them um last month and we'll probably do it again in the spring, once we know when the culvert's gonna be here. Uh so you can see the uh the bids here for that, what any price was there. Um you can see how much more than our engineer estimate was, uh and the engineer estimate was probably about nine months old. So prices have really gone up on a lot of the things. Um and then overall, our budgets are right where they need to be at this time of year, sixty one percent spent for streets, public works, uh sixty three for roads. Uh sixty six for uh police and sixty nine percent for fire, so um as we enter fourth quarter, we're exactly where we need to be positioned. Um things looking good to finish out the year, so and uh we do have a reminder of a parliamentary training, I think that might be in our agenda tonight uh coming up, so. Uh any questions, uh I'll take them now.
Just with Jennifer?
Okay, I'm just doing a little back of the envelope um calculations here, so the twenty percent match on the one point six million, that's hundred and twenty thousand, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. And then also, I am. Can't help but point out, it looks, I'm adding up over half a million dollars with some grants, that's impressive, that came in. Um well done, not even counting this other, I mean, that's amazing, so thank you.
Yeah, we're excited.
Any other questions from the board? And question in the room, yes?
Yeah, hey Kyle, uh gray screen again, it's the um it's still an item to consider paying any of the other roadways, specifically to the line of rail.
Yes. It's in our, it's one of our priorities in our uh capital improvement list that we worked out with GBOS. That project's looking at anywhere from about uh one point five to three million dollars and so um. And you know, tonight we'll talk about it through the budget process, but we've been, we slowly save up through our accounting or through our yearly budgets by putting contributions to our capital. We haven't had success over the years with bonding for Gerwood because we need the whole municipality to approve it. It's time, uh we are looking at alternative means to that, uh there's a new uh sort of. Engineering style where they infuse concrete into the base layer, which really solidifies and makes it strong, so what three million costs is. And the geotech costs, they wanted us to dig down almost eight to ten feet, take out all the peat and then backfill it. Maybe just the trucking alone to take the feet out would just be probably a million and a half. And so we're trying to find alternative ways for service areas to afford making these improvements and making it long lasting.
That a second option would reduce intent would be to reduce maintenance then.
Correct.
Over time.
Yeah. Our intent there would be to uh one, improve it for long term maintenance and then two for safety. So most likely looking at speed bumps um in that section and and we would evaluate uh a pedestrian's uh. Uh sidewalk, the thing we have is it's really tight there for snow storage, so we know we can't provide that, but we can provide. Um a narrow road base which contains traffic in wider shoulders, it will give more of a measure of safety because people will be closer together driving. And more space for pedestrians on the shoulders, so so yeah, we're looking at all that options, we just need the money, that's what's down too.
Thank you very much Kyle and Margaret, so much work and I really like the explanation pictures.
Got into the low cheese.
Color in the line, okay, go to public comment, person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes, the person must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone here for public comment, Brian?
Hi. Uh I'm Kyle Holland and I'm running for House District Nine, uh want to come by and say hi again, I think most everyone has started to see me now a few months. Um I just wanted to mention a couple of things tonight, one is I think many of us saw the article in the paper this morning about the transportation funding that's not going through. And I I haven't dug into it myself, but I have a lot of concern about how that's affecting some of our major transportation projects and whether that rolls downhill in the projects you need. And further delaying when those will happen because it sounds like that's pushing everything ahead or down the road a couple of years because of not getting the funding in this next cycle. It'll mean we have to wait longer for that, so would like to learn more about that, but I'd be curious down the road to find out if it is impacting Gerwood and the projects that are brought here along this highway. Um the other thing I wanted to mention is just uh obviously, I'm really interested in the election process. Um we are gonna be having a candidate's forum in Whittier next Thursday, if anyone here is interested in going down there. Uh it's Thursday, I think at six PM, we have another one the following Thursday at Halo, which is an annual one that's on October third, the next Thursday after that. And I would be, you know, thrilled if there was some way we organize something in Gerwood uh before the election, so. I did reach out to Supervisor Eddington about, you know, whether or not there was one that was usually done in the past, I understand that maybe um through the rotary, there's an option there, so. I'm hoping that will come together, but other than that, uh I just appreciate a moment of your time and I'll be around if anyone has questions later and would like to chat with me, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we have one online, Deborah?
Hi, I'm Deborah Krogan, box one one six five in Gerwood. I'm finding it increasingly difficult to stay engaged in our public community process. When the meetings go for so long and then there's a scheduled special meeting following a day or a few days later. Um what I find very disturbing and disrespectful was once again last week, what was clearly a collective community. Consensus at LUC, for example, comes back to a special meeting and two members decide to go against. What the majority of the community had expressed. For fact, the deadline for any type of response to N star is and always has been September seventeenth. If it was indeed a fact that G boss cannot pay for an appeal, at least they can. I think and I believe in that they can and should write a letter expressing. The concerns that our community has over the redundant gas line, which is clearly not shown in our trails plan and our comprehensive plan. I would suggest that perhaps if that is too difficult, then just resend the original letter to N star from last year. And reiterate that our community wants to see. Alternative routing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight? Yes.
Can you hear me from here or should I move over?
As long as the microphone catches you.
Just be loud.
Just be loud. Everyone online could be loud.
I can be loud. Um Linda Mankoff, um Gerwood Health Clinic, I'm just here to share some, a couple of uh upcoming events or some. Uh past successful events as well, we launched a spotlight, a senior spotlight at the clinic. And that is attracting seniors in the community, a very, it's a growing age group in Gerwood and it is the fastest. Um growing age group in the entire state of Alaska. Um so at any rate, that that uh those gatherings have been rather successful and so successful. That we're probably gonna move them over here, Margaret, because I'm having standing room right now. Um discussing topics that pertain specific to senior healthcare and to resources that may be available to them. So I just wanted to share that and invite people, so it's not just for people of a certain age, which is sixty and over. But for people who are interested in senior care, there might be some caregivers who need some information. For people, they their family members, they might be taken care of. And as Chief mentioned, Saturday is busy, we are participating in the fall, um the Rotary Fall Health Fair. So please come out and join us and find out what else is going on in healthcare and Gerwood. Thank you.
Thank you Linda. Any other public comment tonight? Hearing and seeing none, we'll start our agenda, we'll go business. Number eleven, review and approve GBSA twenty five budgets.
Sure, I'll start it and uh we'll first start off is uh what's in front of you here is the mill levy by tax district for the different parts of Anchorage. And uh you'll see here, it says fifty nine, but these numbers aren't uh all there. Uh so there's there's about fifty, maybe forty five or fifty plus that different taxes within Gerwood are within Anchorage and Gerwood is tax districts. Further reference here, um and each of these tax districts pay different mill levies. Uh and that's because of the different services they may receive within those and uh Gerwood pays a mill levy of twelve point three three. And within that mill levy, that goes five point three of it goes to the Gerwood Valley Service Area. And uh point three of it goes to area wide, everybody can see, everybody pays that. Um and then the Anchorage School District, uh which is over here, um six point six seven, and once again, everybody pays for that. So those those things are are right there. Um uh when you get into it and sorry, I have to do some flipping here. So this is the historical of our mill levy and so you can see going back to two thousand and ten, um so for the last fourteen years. Um where we have stood um in our bill levy, um and so right now we're at a twelve point three three uh for this current year, fiscal year. Um and then overall, our average has been eleven point nine nine um for our total mill levy. And you can see the different breakdowns uh for Gerwood. Um starting in uh, I think it was two thousand and sixteen, that's when we took on police services, so that added a new department to our our uh. Our mill or uh our services here, and so you can see the bump there, we did that halfway through the year and then we took on the full. I think actually uh within this period right here, uh in seventeen, so we took on a full year of police services at that point. Um and then to give you comparisons uh as to what we pay for a mill levy um for taxes compared to downtown. You can see um the average down there has been close to sixteen with ours has been twelve, so they paid four more mills down there uh for those services. Overall, Anchorage or Gerwood is the fifth lowest tax district in the municipality. And we are the lowest when you consider all major services, so fire, police, parks and street maintenance um within the municipality. And this guy just gives you how mills are calculated, um and you know, according to what you would pay. Um you know, for properties, a property is a hundred thousand in value, you're paying close to ten thousand dollars in taxes here for for your bill, for your taxes. Uh so let's talk about where we're at right now, so in twenty four, um this was, this is an example of a house with a tax value of eight hundred and. Uh two thou or eight hundred two thousand five hundred, um and so after uh exemption, um so they receive the exemption there. Um and uh you would be looking at uh the area wide, that house would be paying two hundred and forty dollars towards area wide. Towards the school district, it would be paying uh five hundred and five thousand three hundred fifty two dollars. And then towards the Gerwood Service Area, uh taxes would be uh four thousand three hundred and one dollars there rounded up. So overall, uh once again, ninety, close to ninety nine hundred dollars in taxes, um going to those three different uh service areas. Um and uh and when you break that further down, the Gerwood Service Area, here's what you'd be paying for uh with that uh forty three oh one. Um uh about uh three thousand, uh excuse me. Screwed it up, off here a little bit.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, um. Do it here, got myself backwards, um. I screwed this up when I put this in here, sorry, uh but this would be the breakdown, so one point seven of the mill would go to street maintenance, two point one uh would go to fire. Uh police uh would be point nine, so just close to one mill, uh the Housing and Economic Development Fund is uh point zero five. And then Parks and Recreation is point six two, uh we do rev generate generate revenues uh from interests. Um and you know, when we we do have a uh a reserve account and that generates uh revenues for us, so that does offset our taxes a little bit. So that revenue that comes in uh does cut down our mill rate a bit, so uh that gets us down to the the five point three three one there, so. Um sorry, I didn't have this broken down, I don't know what happened there, I played with my calculations and checked that. And then um what we're looking at for this year, so jumping into uh the mill rate for this year for two thousand and twenty five. Uh these are the proposed uh budgets for this year. Um and so uh you can see, we're looking at an increase uh of thirty seven thousand for streets, uh hundred and thirteen thousand for. Uh fire, uh six thousand for police. Uh I don't know why that's negative thirty, I'm sorry, I something happened with that one, but uh we're looking at an increase there of about thirty thousand, so that should be actually thirty thousand, not negative thirty thousand. And then fifteen thousand um for parks and rec and we'll get into the more of the details here as we go through each one of the budgets, so. Um so what do Pat, what do your property taxes pay for, so area wide, uh that covers EMS services, libraries, ammo control, all these things here, listed up here, Stewart Highway. Uh police enforcement, um and in that area. Uh typically, over time, we actually see a rebate with area wide, which means it reduces your taxes because we collect a lot of those revenue fees through. Uh tobacco, bed taxes, um uh fuel tax, things like that. Um and so in a good tourism year, actually rental car tax too, um in a good tourism year, you sometimes see that uh as a negative, so it will reduce your property taxes. But last year, um with the proposed budget, uh they needed more funding to uh cover area wide services for twenty four, so we saw a little. Bit of a mill rate increase there and then the uh Anchorage School District covers the K through twelve primary and secondary education and associated services. Um with that, so everybody pays that equally and then the Gerwood Valley Service Area plays police, fire, parks and rec and street maintenance. Um and so the service area that the uh that funds are only collected in the Gerwood uh. Uh service area and remain in the Gerwood Service Area, so all that comes back and we have surplus budgets, it drops into a savings account. It drops into a savings account or it goes towards our designated accounts for our bond rating and emergency funds. So it stays there with it. You know, a prime example right now is we're using it as a collateral to buy engine forty-one right now with those funds that are sitting in those accounts. So, so that, that's working for us right now to get that new engine built, which unfortunately is gonna take time, but it will get here eventually. So, and then overall, I said in two thousand twenty-four, we had the fifth lowest mill rate compared to all their tax districts. And Gerwood has the lowest mill rate compared to other with similar services, fire, police, parks, and road maintenance. So, so let's jump into fire. Chief, do you want to take it from here?
No.
Okay. I can get going, I can get going. And so as we go through the budgets tonight, what you'll see higher than in yellow is a change from last year. So it most likely represent increase or decrease as you go through it. So at this point this year, fire is looking at an increase for COLA with their labor. So it'd be a three percent increase there. And then also they have gone fully staffed. They had brought in some new positions last year, so I think there's a catch-up within this as well. And then health insurance, which is just always a tough target, but we've been seeing those increases over time. So anything you want to add to the labor section there?
Yes, three percent on the, was on the in-home call and the station and all the staffing. We are still about one dollar under what everyone else is paying per hour. And then we pay for training hours. We only pay twelve dollars an hour for your training hours, so it's not your response time hour. So we are still significantly paying under market value compared to the surrounding departments. Not excluding AFD, but looking at the Kenai Peninsula and other departments. Health insurance, it does say up there, split fifty-fifty, I want to apologize. I actually, it's now weighted a little bit more to fire than EMS. Our EMS costs are set, they're not going to increase this next year. So we moved a little bit over to, to fire to accommodate an increased labor cost for EMS. Our station staffing is to have three on-call. We're, our initial staffing, we should have by NFPA seventeen twenty is, we should have six for initial response. We have three on-call and three in the station at any time. And then we try and pick up the other three with paid-on-call members that are paid, that were doing forty-eight hours on-call coverage a month. They're only paid when they actually go on the call. So they're hopefully in the station or in the community to make up that other three. Again, every, there's a national shortage of firefighters, as you might or might not know. Also in Anchorage, it's very competitive. Also in Alaska, it's very competitive to have firefighters. Everybody's trying to steal everybody's firefighters. So it's a challenge to keep everybody engaged and also not train everyone and then have them have to other jobs. In terms of non-labor, non-labor is just adjustments there. Non-labor, it's a case of sort of moving the deck chairs around, but keeping them on the same, on the same patio. From, from when you last saw this, we did an analysis of where we are, budget to actual. So we tried to move a little bit more into operating expenses, recognizing that we're already fully expended in our operating expense budget for this year right now. And yeah, that's where we are.
And for those who aren't familiar, Gerwood Service Area just pays for the fire portion of the operations of the fire department. And then EMS funding comes from the area-wide. But like every department in the United States, the calls are lopsided. And it's an old tradition that it takes a lot of inventory of equipment and people to bring up a fire department, but majority of fire department calls nowadays are EMS responses. So, so between those two coming in from area-wide and service area, that makes a complete department here that's ready for response. So that's, that's been an ongoing issue forever as to the fact that we recognize that EMS is actually the primary call-out. But we also need the standard fire department, which may not be called out for fires all that often anymore because of better building techniques and safety measures. So, so we slowly roll down. You can see the non-labors there, you know, some are actually decreased and some are increased a little bit. So Chief Weston did try to lighten the blow with trying to find savings within the non-labor to help with the labor costs that are always a challenging issue. And then we did bump this from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand. We've had it at thirty thousand for twelve years and parts are not getting any cheaper. But we're hoping with these new apparatus and vehicles coming in that we'll see a decrease with the amount of maintenance needs. We've been going over this thirty-five quite a bit in the last couple of years. We've had like full engine replacements and all these things where they're keeping these vehicles running. But they're working hard to get the, that fleet rotated. And so overall, and then down here, this is something we have no control over. This is what's called IGCs, intergovernmental charges that we receive from other departments that support the fire department. And we just rolled those over from this year to the next year. We won't know what those are until first quarter as OMB sets those each year. But we do pay quite a bit in IGCs for the fire department, as you can see there. So four hundred and forty-five thousand goes to departments that support us.
Great, can we, can we explain, or do you know what the, the AME shop, IDC?
So that, so we pay into this, that's the maintenance shop. So the AFD does all the maintenance on all of our fire apparatus and, and ambulances.
We're women of it from that line.
Yeah, they, we're required, yeah, we're required to, to use them for all of our vehicle maintenance.
Yeah.
And then overall, we do predict that there will be some revenue produced from out-of-area calls. You know, anything for fire outside of Gerwood usually has a charge associated with it. And then anything that the fire department goes on to the peninsula, there's agreement there. And then Chief herself does go out on wildfire calls, so she does bring back revenue, especially if we use apparatus like within state for that. So, so there is some return there. So, so overall, the increase would be a hundred and thirteen thousand for, from twenty-four to twenty-five. That would have us at a predicted mill rate of two point two-five. Now, keep in mind, my predicted mill rates are based on assessments for twenty-four. We do think that twenty-five will go up again in assessments for the Gerwood Valley with so much new construction going on and the real estate market still has been prosperous. So, so we may see that mill rate come down once the twenty-five assessments are complete. So, so that's a lot of numbers. We'll open up the questions.
Okay, now there's a question time. Anyone who has questions? One in the room, any questions? Can you see any questions on fire?
So I don't know if the board would want to consider doing one motion at the end for all the departments? Or do we want to do a motion with each budget so we have that recorded?
I would recommend we keep one at the end.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, we'll move into street maintenance. And so this is where the labor budget for Margaret and I live with straight maintenance. We actually are technically employees of operation and maintenance, public works, but cover so much more. But what we're looking at here is a three percent cost of living increase. And we work, there's just been a trend over the years that we've seen that with the union contract increases. And then if the mayor, I'm an executive employee, the mayor decides to give a boost for executive employees, we try to catch that here. So you'll see that going from two ninety-three to two ninety-seven from the two years there. We are asking to increase office supplies for this year. I mean, just printer cartridges alone are killing us. So we're just trying to keep up with that there. And then fuel has just gotten more expensive with our work trucks. So we're just asking for a small increase there, three hundred dollars. And then what's really getting into the meat here is the maintenance, repair and maintenance supplies. So this is the salt and sand and culverts and rap that we buy for the road supplies. It's just gone up significantly. We just see that across the board, like I just said, ten dollars more a ton now to get the e-chips and salt for the winter. So we barely have enough money to cover those, those requirements. And then we buy the calcium in the spring for dust control and buy more at some really dusty summers. So it's just trying to keep up with that. So we're asking for an increase there as well. And then street light, street light and catch basin cleaning. Catch basin cleaning went from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars in the last round of bids. And so that has come expensive for us, so trying to keep that storm system clean. You know, all our catch basins, for the most part, try to catch our pollutants. And then we go through and pump them out every spring or summer. So we need to increase there as well. And then our flint, our reef, our rate fleet rental. Have you read ADN this last week? They talked about how they've under-invested in the fleet and they're catching up now. So our monthly fleet cost jumped from five thousand to twenty-one thousand dollars. And so that's what we pay for the two trucks and it covers all our maintenance and the paying off the trucks. And, and so there was a lot of squawking internally with this, but it's been set and they're trying to catch up to get the fleet back up and in shape before it actually collapses. So we're seeing that. We did receive a new truck last year and I'll be looking to replace our other truck, which now is going on fifteen years old within the coming year. So we're trying to have reliable equipment being, especially this far from Anchorage. When a plow breaks down and I gotta take it off and put it on a trailer and drive it in, it takes a lot of effort to make that happen. So we're trying to have better equipment down. So overall, we're, once again, IGCs here are just a prediction rolling from last year. So overall, we're looking at thirty-seven thousand dollars, say thirty-eight thousand dollar increase. We're looking at a mill rate of one point eight-one for street maintenance next year aspect. So.
Any questions on street maintenance? Grace?
Thank you. I'm usually pretty much being in government, so I'm a little bit confused on the IGC related to resource management. And what that certainly would deal with that involved?
Nope, that's our accountants. So the PMNE accountants, they do all our bill paying and our POs and our bids and everything along those lines. So it's been at fifty-five thousand since I got here, two thousand and eleven. So yeah, it pays for our coworkers up in.
Any other questions? Do you hear any highlights? Great.
Okay.
Great job on that.
Move right into parks. And so parks, for the most part, we're keeping our labor budget the same. Hope we can retain two park criteria curtes next season. We've had two great ones for the last two years. We're hoping we can get them back again. And our increases here with skate park, we like to do a significantly rebuild on one of the ramps there. It's gonna require a lot of steel. So we're asking for a two thousand dollar increase there. But we are reducing the funds coming for the hand tram as we don't see that as a priority need anymore. We haven't, we've been able to work with what resource do we have to maintain? Even if it's closed, we still go out there and make sure it's in a safe position for people to be around. So we don't think we need additional funding for that. And then we are reducing our trails, materials a little bit there. We've been luckily good with the grants. So this helps us with signage and other materials that we can buy, mostly tools, especially with that. So that helps us a lot in that way. And then what else I got in here? For the most part, we are asking for a little bit of increase in an SCA or Alaska Trails Crew for ten days next year. We have some other trails besides the ones we won grants for that we'd like for them to work on. So mostly being the Beaver Pond, helping us with some drainage. We've been doing some testing out there of new methods and we think that we can make those work with the trail crew next year. So we want to bring in a crew there and get them for ten days. All of that's, that's the quote there for the next year. And then we did raise the dumpster, NSTAR utilities up as we've been seeing increased costs there with those two. So we asked for two thousand dollars more. And then overall, one thing I'll point out here, in each one of these budgets, you see a contribution to capital. And so we keep those flat from last year, but we are adding two thousand, two hundred thousand to the parks fund for our capital needs there. And then up in roads was three hundred thousand. And then up in fire, about seventy-five thousand there as well. For fire, we have a fund in there to help pay down the debt on the new engine coming in. So, so we have those payments in there as well. And IGC is once again, the same story. And so the increase here would be fifteen thousand dollars from last year to this year. And that would have us at a base, estimated mill rate based on twenty-four assessments at point six-two. So, any questions with parks?
One question. When we were discussing it last year, we talked about increasing some of the charges for this room, a few other pieces. I just wondered where things stash load. That's still.
Didn't gain much traction or support from GBOS on that. So this is something we want to address again. We had an internal discussion or a meeting and discussion about it. And we just kept things the same because we didn't seem there was a lot of support to change it. But you know, this, sorry, this room is, ever since the beginning, it's been at ten dollars an hour, which is extremely affordable. And we talked about maybe raising it twenty, but I think people had concerns about, about not making a available community asset by raising it on different groups. So we've also discussed the, the other revenue source for us is the campground. That's a very primitive campground and at least sometimes half of it's flooded, depending on what California Creek's doing. And so we haven't raised those fees yet. And then we could also review all our rental fees for the park and things like along those lines. But we didn't really do a deep dive into it last year.
I mean, we just got to get a couple of percent of revenue overall. And most of that revenue is actually interest on savings, isn't it?
So, yes, yeah. Yeah, because we, we might get a little bit, but that will just fall into our, if we get more than we predict here, that falls into our savings account.
Okay.
Margaret?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we are seeing an increase in our park rentals in general. And also a park that we hadn't had a lot of fees generated from was the Lions Club Park. So starting this year, we received the authority to permit with groups that are using that area. And so those are coming back to the service area this year for the first time. And I just calculated that the fees would be to one of the organizations that admittedly has been using it the most for the, and it's going to be about three thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's kind of cool. We also have some other local businesses that have been using different areas and parks as a permit instead of just on a more casual basis.
We should certainly do a little change in that number this year because we're increased use.
Yeah.
Okay. And one thing we worked out with HLB is, so HLB and, and the Gerwood Parks Department have been collecting permit fees on different trails through a very long history. Well, we got discussing with them and we're collecting the trails that they're going to permit on because it's not technically an easement, but we still do management work on it. They're going to return the daily rates back to the service area and they're just going to charge administrative fee to write the permit. So that's really great because I said, well, we put all this effort to get these trails and keep them maintained. And they said, okay, yeah, we can get you back the usual fees for all these commercial entities. So we're finding sort of a dance there with HLB to get the funds back to the community. Okay, next one, Gerwood Housing and Economic Fund. And so we're looking at an increase here for twenty-five with also a projected revenue, which we haven't received revenues in the past through STR permit fees. So overall, you can see the difference there. We're going from fifty thousand to eighty thousand six hundred. And that calculates in the permit SRT, STR permit fee. So Mike, I mean, you drove this, you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, so this is, this is our projection, assuming that there is a basic registration scheme implemented next year. We get the opportunity to revise this budget at the end of Q1, so around April time. So at that point, we'll see what's actually been implemented, make an adjustment appropriately. But the main difference here, the permit scheme roughly cancels out the costs, our estimated costs, I think we will receive in revenues. The big difference here between last year, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five is as we move towards kind of using land for different things, there's a lot more pre-development work. So we've allocated seventy-five thousand to pre-development, which could be under several different projects as opposed to fifty. Majority of the increases because of the allocation of money to pre-development.
Thank you. Any questions on that one? Any?
Okay. And then lastly is the police budget. So we are entering year three of the three-year contract. We actually have a two-year extension that could start after twenty-five. And we already have a negotiated price that would increase to. But this contract was under a set rate of the same price for three years, so. So it's been really nice for budgeting that we have that straight number. And so as I said, twenty five will be the last year of this contract rate at seven ninety three. The increase we do ask here for is six thousand more for tenant improvements. So we, the police, would your police have asked for the substation, which is located across the street from Chair Five at the ACS building, has asked for ACS to make some safety improvements in the building, to put a more secure doorway up into the office, create a breathalyzer station downstairs, which means they have to bring power and put in a cabinet for it and a few other things, just to make it more efficient for the operations there. And we do have officers that do stay there overnight. So just trying to add some privacy through that, those improvements. So those improvements will be paid back over a three year period for the area. Sorry. So, so with the increase for this year would be six thousand or twenty five would be six thousand. And our mill rate estimate there would be point nine five for police services for the coming year. So.
Any questions on that one? Danny, Kyle?
Yeah. So just moving through it, just, just gives you a snapshot of our capital contributions that we are looking at for twenty five. So it would be three hundred thousand for roads, two hundred thousand for parks, and then seventy four thousand for fire. And then for fire, we would also have a hundred and four thousand that is put aside to pay off debt towards engine forty one. And then last year, we had the same thing. And so that, those funds are actually being put aside to pay the engine. We already paid eight hundred thousand towards the engine and the engine was close to one point three million. So we're using these monies to apply towards that debt. And so we will be having that, by the time the engine gets here, we may have all the money ready just to pay off the remaining debt once it comes in. We pay the final payment there on those. And just keep moving forward. This is a quick rundown of our capital projects. So you can see where we're at with the different amounts. Right now, we have two hundred and twenty three thousand available in the capital fund for the fire station of the fire department. Eight hundred thousand is encumbered towards engine forty one, parks and rec. We have five hundred thousand currently, two hundred and five thousand encumbered towards the design, five hundred thousand towards the construction in twenty five. We have an undesigned amount right now of four hundred and nine thousand. We did move through the board's approval, sixty nine thousand out of discount to pay for Alieska Culvert project as that came in more expensive than we were predicting. And then we have forty seven thousand for this room. We recently just did an AV upgrade for this room in two thousand twenty three. So overall, there's funding in there, totals one point one million in there. But as you can see, most of it is encumbered towards some project, another about four hundred and nine thousand is available for projects. And the street maintenance, right now we have unencumbered or available money. We have eighteen thousand available as we had eight hundred and forty seven thousand now encumbered towards that Alieska Davos Fish Project. You know, this also includes the soft costs of project management, project inspectors, AWU costs, all those things that aren't captured with the actual contractor who's doing the building, the other things that have to go towards the project there. So and then we have forty five thousand towards the gravel stockpile that will be coming in. Now, we may not use this for full forty five thousand. We will do a, we'll measure in way that material is, comes out and we'll pay for actually what we buy. It comes in, they had to use some of it for that chew gas project to finish out there. So once we take ownership of it, we'll have a better idea once those tickets come in. Do you have some funding, money still designated towards the cemetery predevelopment fund? I think I'm going to at some point now release that, but I'll work with the board on that. That will probably give a direction as to where we want to put that as, as the service area at this point in time has no expenses towards the cemetery. And then overall, my contributions for two thousand twenty four were six hundred and seventy eight thousand. And so we're asking the same for twenty five there. So. And then this kind of just runs through. Better repeat here. So. And then this takes you through all the different capital projects going through there. So, so that kind of gets us to the end of the presentation of this. I'll leave it to you guys.
Anyone like to make a motion, Mike?
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
Here we are, motion on the floor in a second. We have discussion.
First of all, I'd just like to thank both, actually the, the chief, who's, I don't think, oh, yeah, the back, the back. I heard the silence, sorry. To the chief for the five pound budget and Kyle, of course, for all his work on budget presentation. Thank you very much.
I also like to thank you all for all of your work, both Boston and Kyle. And at the board of directors meeting for fire last week, they approved the fire budget with the motion. They were a little concerned about the operating costs right now, but that maybe will leave in first quarter revisions or see what the next two months have store fires in support.
Yep. Right, so having said, so we moved to the original budget, I want to discuss a couple of potential amendments as well. So I think in the second packet, we have budget amendment one. So remember a couple of years ago, I can't actually remember which year, sorry, it's two thousand twenty, twenty eight. We, we used to have a competitive grant for recreational grants for multiple nonprofits. And we changed it a few years ago. So Four Valley's got a fixed amount of twenty five thousand. And then the rest was still done competitively. And what I can tell, that's been very successful. What I'm proposing this year as an amendment is we do the same for both Little Bears and Glacier, Glacier Valley Tranche. So we would have a fixed, a fixed payment of ten thousand dollars to Little Bears, which is slightly higher than they've been receiving over the last few years, seventy five hundred T, which is slightly higher than they've been receiving over the last couple of years. And then to compensate for that money coming out of the competitive grant for remaining nonprofits, it's the overhead amount by five thousand from sixty thousand to sixty five thousand. So the net effect here is Four Valleys gets the same as it has the last couple of years. Little Bears and GVT would get a fixed amount this year. The intent would be for a fixed amount in the future. So they have more certainty of funding. And then there's also an increase in, a small increase in the remaining money for competitive grants across all the other nonprofits who apply there. So this is basically increasing the pot for everybody, but specifically for Little Bears and GVT to give them some degree of certainty on the funding going through this.
We have a motion that's amended amendment. We have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mike. Do you have anything?
The other thing, just to mention, I did talk about this during the work sessions, but I thought it made sense to go through the budget as well and then propose this amendment to the end.
Any other comments in the board?
I, sorry. I can share with you, we just did some of the quick calc's that put that in there. And so just to give you a idea of what that would look like, which kind of goes in hand, but just to show you the difference here. So. So you would see the increases here. So you would see these come in. So we would be seeing that increase there for the, the budget going up for, from sixty to sixty five thousand for nonprofit grants.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle, for plugging those in before in case. I would just add that being involved in the grant applications for a few years now, it is always a, a great process, but challenging because we always want to give more money if we can. And if we are increasing the, if the mill rate's going up because of property values going up, appraisal's going up, we could pull the extra five thousand and then spread out a little bit more for this year and intending to go further into the future with very integral organizations like Little Bears and their roles. Very foundational in Gerwood and Barrett funding, you're right again. Important for visitors as well, have the public transportation. So I would be in favor of this amendment. Other comments from the board on this amendment? Any question for Mike? Would this be revised every year?
Well, they typically do start with flat funding. So I would expect that at the end of, when we're proposing the twenty twenty six funding, we'd probably start with whatever we ended up with this year. But we're not committing ourselves to doing this in the future. The expectation is we continue that. We can't really force a future board to, to follow this, this process. We can just recommend.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Okay, I would ask for a roll call for this amendment.
Can I, sorry, we didn't receive some emails lately.
Oh, yes, we do have comment then?
We did receive letters of support from the Gerwood Valley Transit Director and also from board members.
Can I just be a hand up? Joan Lauer, your hand is up?
Oh, yes, I, speaking on behalf of Little Bears, thank you very much. I think that would be awesome. And thank you for all the support you've given in the past.
Thank you, Joan. Oh, gee, Boston?
I just want to speak in support of GBT getting funded, they say our, our emergency backup plan, we're going to have to fund large amounts of feedback in the community, such as in a earthquake or tsunami from Long Island with, so we would like that to be funded.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have anything else, Mike? Okay. I have asked for a roll call for this amendment.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that.
Hey, I'm going to move budget amendment. A little bit more involved. So. First of all, we, I'll say the other, the last one we really needed to ask now because it affects our nonprofit grants, which we're going to be dealing with at the end of this month. This one, we're going to have to, whatever we do tonight, we may want to revise, we may want to make some revisions in April anyway. Because as this stands, it will depend, the actual numbers will depend on what happens with the assessments of Gerwood Valley. And again, as Kyle said earlier, we know there's been a lot of new buildings. So that means we know the assessed value will go up, even if everyone's property assessment stays the same. So as we've heard over many years, we have, Gerwood has this particular problem with paying for capital projects. We don't really have access to bonding in the way that much of the municipality does because everything we propose has to be voted on by the whole municipality. And it's almost always, at least I think every time in the last fifteen or so years, whenever we've proposed anything, the municipality as a whole has voted against it, even though only Gerwood is paying for it. So bonding isn't really an option to us. So what we've been doing over the last decade or so is, is taking some of our mill, some of our property tax money and sort of saving for projects. And then in some cases, paying a chunk of it upfront, borrowing some with intergovernmental loans and some other mechanisms. And in some cases, saving it all before we can start the project. And as you've seen earlier, waiting a number of years just means the cost goes up. So to add some more certainty and to, and to basically, you know, put a stake in the ground for our commitment to investment in Gerwood and our infrastructure here. What I'm proposing is that we, by a matter of policy, allocate a certain mill rate towards capital investments. Now, Kyle earlier produced a table of how capital investment has been, the mill rates review or the amount we put aside over the years. And when you do that, the mill rate is the lower gray bar. You've seen operations have stayed fairly steady. The amount of money has gone up, but that's, it's tracked roughly how the property evaluations in Gerwood have gone up and how the additional development in Gerwood has gone up. So it sits within a fairly narrow bar. The amount we put towards capital has, has grown, it's more than doubled in the last nearly ten, well, eight years. The reason I use twenty seventeen is that's where we started with police, otherwise you see a. So we've been increasing the amount we put aside to capital anyway. And we're currently putting aside approximately point eight mil. So what this proposal would do is just fix it at one mil. And if we fix it at one mil by policy, then every year, as the amount of infrastructure increases, the amount of, of building and valuation of the community goes up, the amount we pay into our capital savings would also go up and track. So there's a table at the bottom that sort of shows how these numbers would, if you go down to the next bit. There's a table at the bottom that shows how those numbers would change if we applied that today using the twenty twenty four assessment. And we know that that's going to go up a little bit, but it would basically mean we have eight sixty into capital rather than six eighty. So it would be a significant increase. I'd assume that the fire capital debt would stay the same and the increase would be distributed across everything else. So just to summarize, what this basically is, is a policy change for us. We're not going to change code. We're not going to introduce any addition to the, we're not going to change the tax cap on how much we can charge for mill rate. What we're going to do is as a matter of policy, we're going to say we allocate a certain mill rate towards capital improvements. And then it will track over the years as, as things get more expensive and as the valuation of the valley gets, gets higher. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm sorry, one last.
Oh.
The last thing is this particular change would equate to approximately a twenty one or twenty two dollar increase on your taxes per year for every hundred thousand valuation. So of taxable valuation. So for seniors, it's less than the actual valuation since they would receive about two hundred and twenty five reduction. So it's a, it's a, it's twenty dollar on a four hundred, on a five hundred thousand dollar house. It would be, or sorry, five hundred and seventy five thousand at valuation. If you're a resident, you would be paying five hundred or you'd be assessed five hundred. This would be about a hundred bucks a year for investing communities.
Thank you, Mike, for the thorough presentation and the math here. There are second for that amendment? I don't hear a second for discussion. Amendment.
Okay, so we'll discuss, I'll bring this up again if you want.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we'll go back to the budget overall in front of us. We have a motion to approve the budgets.
We have, we already have that.
Oh, wait, I thought we just voted on the amendment. That sounds good.
So now we have budget plus amendment that we have to go on.
Are we ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask for a roll call, Kyle, for the motion with the amendments.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion as amended passes four zero.
Right. Let's keep rolling. Thank you for all the work on that. Number twelve is the update appointment of applicant to GBOS seat C. Mike and Kyle?
Give you an update on that. I did receive an email today from the mayor's office. And it said the mayor selected Kelly Okanok to be nominated for seat C of the GBOS. The nomination will be included in the agenda on September twenty fourth assembly meeting. So that was updated from mayor's office.
Thank you. It's one mic unmuted right now. Quiet. Any other questions on twelve? Right, Chris?
Yeah, thank you, good chair. Kyle, just had one quick question on that. You mentioned the mayor's office has selected, I'm just confused as against the original email that was sent to, since GBOS selected Kelly on how they came to that conclusion.
There was another nomination given directly to the mayor's office from a candidate. And so they had two to select from.
And then so two candidates were sent from GBOS to the mayor's office?
No, just one came from the.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Kind of thrown in too.
Thank you, chair.
Just about, there is a mechanism, the code, there's a mechanism. I think it's meant to be for places without elected, but it does not specify. But it says that property owners can, can also nominate people for, for.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for the. Okay, thank you for the update, Kyle. Number thirteen finalized topics for Anchorage to the league, I went to training. Jennifer, do you have anything different on thirteen for us?
No, just, if I may, just a quick reminder that this is happening and it is open to the community and that we had selected out of our choice. And I don't, I don't know if we have the original list available, Kyle or Margaret, of the options that they presented. But out of those options, back in May, we selected that, out of the possible options for this training, we selected decorum and debate, parliamentary procedures, voting, particularly votes to reconsider, and tips for a successful meeting. So that was the original list, and as I said, we've picked out those. The, this is listed as tentative. My understanding is the date is set, so it's October eighth. The time might move a little bit, but it's.
I don't think so anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, it is open to the community, and particularly, I would like to encourage our Girdwood GBOS subcommittees to consider sending people or coming, because this will get us, this might help continue to work towards being all on the same page, because sometimes our committees have developed different cultures around parliamentary procedure, so.
Thank you for your work on this, Jennifer, and this will be a reminder for all of us in the room or other committees, people online, to tell other groups in the community to come join on the eighth of October.
Can I, one other thing about that, the last training that we had, I was surprised by the turnout that we had from, from other, yeah, from other nonprofits, I see the nonames, other nonprofits, not only in the community, but from Anchorage. It turns out that there aren't a lot of opportunities for this, and so I think this is a great service to the community through GBOS, because I didn't even realize, but smaller organizations, especially nonprofits, have trouble sometimes organizing or affording this kind of thing. And so I was very surprised by the total number. I think we had over a dozen organizations represented at the last.
Thank you. Number fourteen, review GBOS response drafted to planning zoning recommendation for changes to the proposed Girdwood comprehensive plan. This is the draft in the packet that I worked on with Brian. Mike, please, your, we will ask questions if we need to. The petitioner, this should be pretty brief, but if anyone on the board has edits, please send them to myself or Margaret. And I also am aware that as the petitioner is able, the petitioner can help too. So I hope this will be trimmed down a bit between now and October. Any comments from anyone?
Sorry.
Yes.
Can I clarify? You're hoping this gets trimmed down?
Yeah, it's really long.
Okay.
I think it's really long, but there's a lot of history. I have a hard time trimming these down.
Okay. One other question about this, you've currently already worked on this with Brett.
Yes. Okay, anything else on this? Well, this is just a rough draft, so we'll see more next month. And I think we, I believe we have this leeway, or not the day of leeway, we have a few weeks that should be passed though next month by this body. Okay, I will move on to number fifteen, the Girdwood Housing Implementation Plan. Consider allocation of funds, discussion and recommendations from GHSC. Would like to start this one.
Let's start this one. So as I've described in previous meetings, the one thing we're missing that a lot of communities have, should, well, we absolutely should have, is a, is an implementation plan for housing policy, which basically covers the types of policies for a fuller analysis of the situation, the current state we have now in the land. But that is already being covered by the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. It's a little bit extra, have to be done back. So a housing implementation plan for Girdwood would cover the additional work to get to a, to get to a slightly more refined demand. And then an analysis of a set of policies, which really an analysis of what's been successful in other similar communities, how they relate to Girdwood, whether they would be, whether they would work under the political structure we have here, what the approach should be, and some rough prioritization between them. So that's kind of the result. And the intent here is to actually get a professional to do the majority of this work, to get a consultant to do the majority of this work. This does not negate the work that individuals are doing in committees, we're doing as GBOS, lots of interested parties are doing. But we're effectively trying to argue a case from the municipality that, you know, for example, let's say, let's say the analysis of short-term rental tax comes back that Girdwood is producing about one and a half million dollars a year for taxes from short-term rentals, we're going to be asking for the majority of that, perhaps somewhere around a million dollars a year, to be used on housing within Girdwood. So we need a professional and sort of valid plan done by professionals to justify that allocation use of funds. We are just not going to be able to get the buy-in from, you know, both the political organizations and also other funding organizations, unless we have something that has a, you know, a professional stamp around it. So what I'm proposing is that we allocate funds, we make a vote tonight, allocate funds to start this process. We still have to go through a, we'll have to generate an RFP and go through a competitive bid process. So this is by not the final step, this is just the first step in this process. Now, I'm aware, as was mentioned earlier, that GHEC has not come to a conclusion. They've been discussing this for several months, but they haven't come to a conclusion. I welcome their input on the, on the RFP. I think that's all very valid. And at the end of the day, we'll put the RFP out, we receive, hopefully, we'll receive multiple proposals, and we can evaluate at that point whether they're appropriately responsive, whether they're justifying the amount that they're charging, et cetera. So this is not a commitment to spending the money, this is a commitment to starting the process to generate this plan. I think time is of the essence. I don't think we can wait another, we've already been discussing this for several months. I think now is the time to move forward on it. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you.
So I'm moving to, I'm actually going to make a move to allocate fifty thousand dollars towards, and then start an RFP process. I'll start generating an RFP to, for a Girdwood Housing Implementation Plan, to hire a consultant to generate that plan.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Margaret?
Obviously not making a second. I just need to clarify that these funds would be coming out of the GHGC.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four.
Brian? Burnett?
I would second this motion.
Thank you, Brian. Motion has been seconded. Have discussion next. I would just like to say thank you for bringing this forward, Mike, again, and thank you for GHEC working toward discussing the options as well. And I feel like we don't have time and we do need a professional. And really, time is, I'm sorry, said time is of the essence on this item. Brian, your hand is up. Would you like to make a comment?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, there we go.
It's okay, I was just checking.
Yep.
Other hands are Brett's.
Thank you. So, yeah, the committee did, GHGC did discuss this in our last meeting. And the discussion amongst the members were that this type of money would be better spent in areas where that type of expertise could be used specifically. And, I mean, we can get into the details on that, but there, the things that were just mentioned, we've already asked for those taxes. We've made those motions and brought that before GBOS for bed taxes. We've all already asked for and got into HLB's work plan for land designation. And we've already been moving towards reduced costs for land development and therefore construction. So it has been discussed and ongoing for months to specifically spend about fifty thousand or fifty-five thousand dollars. And it was proposed by Mr. Edgington before it ever came to GHEC. When it, this, when this last meeting that GBOS had, it was referred back to the committee to see if we could put together a scope of work for this specific task. But after reviewing the housing implementation plan that we have already, which does take into account the unique governance framework that we have under the municipality, it does have a section pertaining to policies and and I, and it hits all of the major points that were just described, that a, that the intent of spending this money would get a professional to do it instead of the committee to do it. And it's kind of interesting, I wanted to make sure that I reminded the GBOS that we've been reviewing how we've been performing against the housing implementation plan, but I have yet to hear the specific expeditious need enumerated that says that we have to spend taxpayer money immediately on doing something like this when we have a panel of experienced developers and realtors and community members and nonprofit folks. And so that committee in GHGC has deliberated this. And we did not think that it was important enough to spend this money this way, especially after the argument in the last GBOS meeting where the consultant that was invited by Mr. Edgington also acknowledged that we did not have to have a housing implementation plan. We were more looking at an action item plan, and that was the intent of a report, to provide enumerated instances of what we're doing as action items against our already developed implementation plan. So in short, we think we can use public money in a better way. And we don't agree with spending fifty thousand dollars on this at this time. I'm sure we'll discuss it in our next meeting, and if we have further direction for use of consultant fees, I would encourage that motion in our body, and we'll see, we'll see how that pans out. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
So we spend money or, I guess they're like, put on an RFP, they basically come back and say, you know, as we say, yeah, you guys can send a program, you guys need. Plus to here. We need to lower the cost of land, we need to lower the cost of gravel extraction. We need to get costs down to be able to enable the construction of, you know, apartment. If a consultant doesn't come in and tell me, like, how they're going to accomplish that for us with tax power, and I'm going to pay to pay for them, like, that, I think it's just a waste of time. You know, right now, GHGC, so the land is coming, not coming with, right, as parcels. The grants discussion is going to cover gravel extraction, right, and we already have owners in the community that are. And maybe the Roger Nightbridge can ultimately serve as a lever for financing, maybe not this year, to them. Right, so that's how we, those are the things as a community or the consultants, we're going to pay for, we should be doing to effectively enable, because you can have policies in a world, and if the builder just says, yeah, it's going to have to build here, so on. Right, so that's, that's how I, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, Amanda Tuttle here. So I guess there's a lot of this that I think has been just going around all, I just think it's backwards. The laws are actually already there for us in this valley, and they're held by the Department of Natural Resources, which is our ultimate land guidance jurisdiction government entity for this valley. That's why HLB has to go back to DNR to get any permission. That is what the land use plan is for. It's in our land conveyance documents from the Department of Natural Resources to domestic housing in bridge nineteen seventy-five, explicitly stated that public utilities are to be covered by HLB. We don't need to create anything more. What we need to do is we need to reallocate, we need to make HLB. That is where they, HLB holds our two assets of this valley, that is gravel and land. That's our two major things that can make us money to make sure that our budgets balance. So first of all, we need to make HLB compliant with the land use documents required from DNR. Make them pay for the, for capital projects, you make them pay for street maintenance, you make them pay for the public utilities rather than that stuff coming out of our own funds. And that, what that does, it opens up the money for us within this valley to take the money and put it towards housing. But HLB needs to be held compliant. Again, the laws are already there. We don't need to create the will.
Any other comments? Jennifer?
So just, I need a clarification. I believe that the last time we talked about this is a question for staff. We've, I understood that the spending for service area needs to go through committee and particularly that any, anything like this would need to be scrubbed by the committee, including the setting up of the RFP. Correct?
Well, getting into the, let's talk through the RFP process. We would want to develop the RFP that we work through, you know, and as a direction in GBOS, if they wanted us to work through the committee. I'm just going off experience. And so like, for example, when we did the Trails Plan, we did that through Trails Committee and we created RFP there. And we flushed that out, and then we brought up a four GBOS. And then we went out to bid for it. And basically, you know, RFP processes, you don't receive like a bid with a number in it. You receive proposals, and then you have a committee, and the committee selects the best contractor. And then we work through the costs of that contractor to be, to do to work. So there would be a process there. We would definitely look towards GBOS as to what direction they want us to do in this aspect. I mean, we typically work with the subcommittee and then bring it up to the GBOS level, because there's a lot of legwork at that level that needs to be worked out. And like, for example, with Trails Committee, we had a subcommittee within Trails that helped us to develop that RFP and to kick it out. At that point in time, the RFP was initially developed by a supervisor, and that gave us something to start with, and then we created it from there, and then we put out a filed document. So, yeah, that's just kind of been the process in the past. There's no real guiding regulation how we develop these. It's just the way we've worked in the past with these committees.
So I am deeply concerned about the circumnavigation once again of the Girdwood, particularly of the Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. My understanding of the conversation that I heard is while it's still in discussion with the committee, and they certainly saw some benefits perhaps in the long run, they do not agree that there is a time, that this is the right time for this proposal. And they specifically have other requests for this money, this essentially fifty thousand drains their account. Now, if I'm wrong about that, it interests in hearing this, but their total budget is fifty thousand. They have a specific request on our agenda later on for some of this money. So I'm very uncomfortable, one with the circumnavigation of GHGC, two with going against the recommendations of GHGC. The conversation I heard is that they are not in favor of this at this time, at this time, again. And that's been corroborated by our co-chairs. And finally, I think we are once again, again, this is not good fiscal policy to talk about things in a vacuum. And GHGC has a total budget with a variety of demands on it, and to completely drain that, I think is deeply insulting.
Thank you, Jennifer. I have a quick question. The number, and it was, before the title was, it could have been action plan or implementation plan, but it was recommended during probably our comprehensive plan and our housing crisis. But having the professional, we choose a different allocation of.
But having the professional, we choose a different allocation of funds, like forty or thirty or your drive to pay for how much, because it's just beginning the process.
That would be an amendment. I'll keep motions in front of us. So those kind of things I'd like to respond to.
Okay.
Um, my understanding is that GHGC hasn't made any decision. They've chosen not to make a decision yet, and they may do in the future. So this talk, if they've rejected it, it's just, I don't think borne out by the facts. Uh, they've chosen not to make a decision so far. Um, secondly, they do not have veto, and I think that's important that we all understand. It's our job as elected officials to uh to determine what happens with um, what happens with taxpayer money. It's not a decision of unelected people on the subcommittee. Um, but they're definitely not to veto it. And the third thing is, um, I think there is a fundamental misunderstanding here um between what I've heard from the co-chairs of GHGC and what the purpose of this um, this project is. So what I'm hearing is lots of um specific projects, fairly tactical projects, which are great um coming through GHGC. And what I'm not hearing is um a bigger, broader policy view from GHGC, which is absolutely fine. I think it's appropriate that they look at what is in front of us today and don't address some of the broader issues. There's no discussion about, um, you know, a lot of policies and actions that are occurring in other resort communities such as sort of shared equity models and things like this. There's been nothing along those lines. It has been very focused on things that are right in front of us now. I think probably also illustrate, which are, I think tie into the problem which some people, some of the developers on the committee um are having in their actual projects today. So this is completely reasonable. Um, but this fundamentally is a different thing. If we have a longer term, broader issue to address about what the bigger policy questions are, and we need to have a lot of that lined out and and set up before we can make the asks for these big amounts of money like we can do as a year or whatever. Um, we are just not going to get very far otherwise. So this is a critical step um in the bigger picture of getting to where we want to be. Um, and I don't think that uh focusing too much on short-term goals, very short-term goals, uh is going to help us when we're trying to get to the um bigger picture issues. And when I say bigger picture, I'm talking about things that we can, can be implemented in six months to a year, but not things to, that sort of are immediately right in front of our faces. So this is a part of this broader drive to um where we, where we need to be as a community. It's to try and gain a little bit more autonomy than we have now, which we will get by larger funding sources. And it's to give us a degree of credibility, which is hard to get when we're doing it ourselves as volunteers, not as professionals. Um, so I'm going to stick with the original number, but uh what I would do is say uh is make us and maybe my second to agree with, uh, which is to take um forty thousand from the money we allocated to GHGC and ten thousand from undesigned it.
Okay, um, do we have a second amendment?
Well, I'm, I'm going to make a, hopefully a change to the original proposal, just in funding sources. Brian agrees.
Brian with friends then.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think Mike might have just suggested, and I was wondering if, if there was a way that, that if we were talking that could we as a board um uh ask GHGC to put together this RFP for us to, to look at? Put together an RFP that has a not to exceed, let's say forty thousand dollars or so, that would still leave room in their account for us to later on consider the agenda item this evening. Um, that would allow them to get some grant writing going for the EPA Community Change Grant. And if that, if we can um be a little more accommodating uh with, with that and a little more inclusive with that.
Thank you, Brian. Mike has another.
Sorry, Brian. You may not have heard my um, my request to change the motion. Um, my request was that instead of saying we take fifty thousand from the money allocated um to our um Housing and Economic Development Support Fund, we take forty thousand from that fund and then also allocate ten thousand from the undesigned fund. So that would leave uh the money which I think is being asked for later to, later tonight, available for other projects that GHGC is doing, but still give us what we originally uh invested for uh this project. So if you, if you were in agreement with that modification to the motion, then I think that achieves what you just asked for.
Yeah, I, I thought that is what I, I heard you say, and, and so forty thousand and then ten thousand from the undesigned account. I'm wondering if we could do it with just forty thousand and not take anything out of the undesigned account and, and keep it at a forty thousand not to exceed.
We, we could do, I was going to suggest we, we start fifty. We can always accept less.
Kyle?
Uh, just from a, a um process point of view to give you some insight here. Um, before we could spend any of that forty thousand dollars, we would have to go through the RFP process. And um, so we would have to uh through everybody, it may be, produce RFP that's accepted and approved. And we put that on the street and then we receive proposals. And then we would have an evaluation committee that would go through and select that. And at that point in time, we would start negotiations with the contractor that selected um uh to do the work. Um, I'll be honest with you, forty thousand dollars is not going to get you far, depending on why, and I haven't seen RFP. But for us to get to the trails plan and we tried to keep that thing around fifty thousand dollars, we were getting some pro bono work given to us to make that happen. And I don't think we'll see that again. Um, and so you probably will be looking more. But like I said, I haven't seen the RFP and what's going to be required of the contractor. Um, but in this day and age, especially what we're seeing and, and rates have gone up substantially on all these professional firms. Um, you should be prepared. Now, if we do, the money is approved tonight to move. What would happen is that forty thousand dollars would be taken out of the operating account and moved into a capital account. It would sit there until we actually sign a contract with the contractor to be used. Um, and so there would be quite a process before we got to actually spending any dollars out of it. But it would be encumbered under uh the title of this RFP. Um, it's sit there until it's used, and at some point we decide we're not going to use it. Those funds could be reallocated in different locations in the capital account, but just want to give you an idea of process and how it would work going forward.
Thank you, Kyle.
Oh, and one more other point is right now, um, and you may be aware that the city is behind on closing books. They're just finished twenty-two and they're right now in the process of finishing twenty-three. And so, and then with this uh engine forty-one being um the equity of our undesigned account and some of our other things being used right now. Um, and we were hoping to finance engine forty-one because we thought we were going to receive it December, and then we found out last week we were going to receive it in a year or maybe two. Um, we need to actually figure out, right now I could not get quick access to the undesigned account because of the financial situation with the way this engine forty-one is laying against our, 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 as debt. So uh we're trying to sort that out. Um, because what we're going to do is we're going to take out essentially an auto loan once the engine arrived, because we need title in hand to give to the banks to create the loan. And so um we thought we'd be there by December, but we're not going to be there. So we have some wrangling to do. So I just want to keep you aware that the undesigned account isn't really available. We have emergency, we can get to it, but there may be some more hurdles to get through to get that ten thousand.
So just to clarify, the uh, we don't actually need that money while we encumber it now. We don't need access to that money until the point at which we sign a contract.
Correct.
Okay.
And at that point in time, you would have, and so we may be looking at more funds depending on the contract that gets negotiated out with the contractor, so.
I think you could, the reason I would, I would say I still think that estimate is reasonable is a lot of these projects, um, a significant part of the cost is doing the initial analysis of the current housing market, um, the demand, et cetera, and most of that is being done for us by the Imagine COVID contract. So starting with that analysis buys us at least a third of the uh, of the, of the project.
Okay.
Uh, given the typical scope that you're seeing in other, uh, other communities.
So we have a, an offer of an amended motion, and I'm not clear if Brian, you were in agree, agreeable with that or not?
Um, I, I did not speak in support of it, no.
Okay, thank you. So here we are, uh. You want to keep, I almost said I have to.
Okay, Brian, of course. So Brian, were you proposing, I didn't completely understand your proposal. Were you proposing that we uh, we allocate, we encumber forty thousand?
That's, yes.
Okay. So I'll make an amendment then to the uh, or maybe Brian wants to make the amendment and I'll second it, but it'll have the same effect. So we'll make it forty thousand or fifty thousand, and then we can address the rest at a later point when we have the numbers.
Okay. So amendment to uh request this item for forty thousand dollars. And then Brian's.
Yes, I'd like to make a, an amendment um to that, to that motion, to that, um, to the, the forty thousand.
And I'll follow me second this.
Okay, thank you. Motion is seconded. Any further discussion on this one? Jennifer?
Yeah, so just checking and move Kyle here. So if we have that forty thousand encumbered and then assuming, uh, let's say for the sake of argument that the GHGC request for the seventy-five hundred farther down passes, that essentially encumbers the mid, all but three thousand dollars, all but two thousand five hundred of the GHGC budget, which I have to say, uh, obviously hamstrings GHGC. Uh, automatically keeps them from, uh, automatically makes it much more difficult for them to then accomplish anything else for the next year without going through a formal um budget request through GHGC for everything else. So, you know, again, GHGC during their discussion, uh, well, they didn't, they did not vote this idea down because they saw merit in the long run. Their discussion was very clearly not in favor of this at this time. So I will stick to that. That is not a um misrepresentation of the conversation. The conversation that I heard was abundantly clear, and they, multiple members said they specifically saw other needs for this money. So I want to just make sure everybody online, everybody's fully aware that what we're doing here on GBOS, we are debating doing is spending the, virtually the entire budget for a committee that has asked us not to spend this budget on this item. So I want, I want that to just be abundantly clear that that is what we are functionally doing. And then uh I, I'd also like to say that um, kind of rubbing salt in the wound, just maybe not that important here, but we are going to venture around and ask GHGC to put together an RFP here, something that they asked not to do. Anyway, deeply ironic.
Um, I just.
Yeah, just a couple of points of clarification. First of all, this is not a budget that is given to GHGC. This is a budget which GBOS has, and uh GHGC, we, we want them to give up their advice on what we do. But we want them to make a decision on the advice. They haven't made a decision. They haven't voted any at all. They've not voted it down. They've not voted in favor. They haven't made a vote. So saying they have made a decision is simply untrue. What you've heard is some of the louder voices. You have not heard a, a vote from the, the body. We don't have the body's opinion, an opinion of the body, until we make an active vote on it. We haven't done that. Or, you know, if we don't make an active vote, we can't speak as a body on an item. Um, and the other thing is, I think you said this would mean there'd be no budget for a year. That's not true. It's already allocated. We approved a budget earlier of seventy-five thousand pre-development work, which would be in that, which would apply as uh January the first. So this actually, if we pass all the things that are asked of us tonight um from the, from the fit within the uh Housing and Economic Development area, that means there would be just a couple of thousand dollars allocated to that area for the next couple of months. And then on January the first becomes seventy-five thousand, which is significantly more than was labeled this year. Yeah, I, I think that's it. So this is, you know, it's a, it's a general budget. There is seventy-five thousand. We've already allocated. We've increased it tonight, uh, proposed. So I don't think this is a, a decrease at all, and it's definitely not uh causing a problem for you. So I would propose we do a vote.
Okay, we have.
On the amendment.
Call question, uh, Brian Cor, but roll hold vote, Kyle?
Uh, is, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington? Yes. Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Amendment passed.
Point of order. You guys didn't do a second on that call question at all.
Do you want to do it again? Do audience members have points or questions? They said it. I really did.
You're right.
I will make your points, but we'll do a second again.
We should have seconded that. We had a ready to call the question. Brian, would you like to second the call question?
Um, I'm sorry, I, I had my hand up um for, for discussion, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to second right now.
Okay, and I didn't see your hand up, and I was prepared to call on you next. Um, we're not ready to vote then?
This is the, this is the amendment discussing.
Right. Right, so Brian, you are next in the queue.
That, that, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I was, you know, this evening, I, I think my motivation for um, for seconding what, what Mike um put forward is, is my interest in, in seeing an RFP come together for um, for some sort of a, a, a housing implementation plan. Um, I've, I have heard from the um, uh, GHGC members that are um in attendance right now, and it would be great to, to hear from GHGC um in a vote as far as what they um uh, what they prefer to do with, with an, with an RFP. Um, so I'm going to be interested, I'm, I'm very interested to hear back what, what they, what they propose to, to do with it. Um, I, I agree with what, with what Jennifer is saying is, is that we have to be, I want to be very careful about um um, uh interfering with the operation of a committee that, that reports to and advises the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, and I, and I am going to be counting on GHGC to be advising us as supervisors for years to come. So I want to keep, keep that open this evening and um a, as we move forward here. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll take two more hands. Brett, yours, and then Matt.
We still, I could, I call for, I call for a vote in the amendment.
You did.
I think that's where we stand. So we're waiting to see if there is a second on the.
Is there a second on the call for a vote? Amendment. Is there a second for a call for a vote on the amendment? Not here a second. Then now Brett, you're next.
Oh, uh, thank you. Uh, through the chair, um, as a co-chair of GHGC, I have several comments. And I think the number one thing that I can pass on is that um, that these arguments did not win the vote of the members of the GHGC. So the members are ahead of this issue. We have in front of us documentation describing the things that um, this proposal was supposed to develop for us. And, and therefore, uh, these arguments sort of fell on deaf ears. Um, we were not convinced that there's a time rush for any of this, and I think that I want to speak to the credibility statements because um, I can only, I can only say what credibility uh like the professionals had uh when they contracted with Imagine Girdwood, and there was such a list of uh changes that had to come back, that kind of credibility or the type of credibility that the Girdwood Housing Study was done with when they list zero mobile homes, when in fact we have a mobile home property in our town. So when we speak of this credibility as being the driving reason to spend fifty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money to do something that a committee is uh quite in the depths of evaluation, and I encourage uh some members to dig in on some of these details. And, and again, uh, I hope to have a report back to this body showing how um, a lot of these things have been addressed. And, and, and I want to go out saying that, that GHGC did listen to this and had ideas about where this could be better spent, but the priority number one was the RV uh development and getting that design phase started as soon as this land is released. Um, because that in effect is an enterprise. It's something that is not a cost center. It could be a profit center to solve these problems. And when we come down to some particulars, as the committee gets into some uh very particular development ideas, uh, as we set the stage for that, um, we've concur that there's a valid use of professional consultancy. We did not agree on using it in this fashion, and we did not. We did not agree on using it in this fashion, and we did not believe that we had to vote in the negative while we're deliberating this, because it was never, it was never substantially demonstrated that there's a specific time rush to do this. And so I know that this has been in, in planning for several years, and those consultants are looking for something else to do after Imagine Girdwood, but there may be a better way to do this, and I would implore GBOS members to appreciate the discussion that GHGC members have had regarding this topic, and I hope that we can come up with the best use of this type of expertise in the near future.
Uh, Brian?
But this is not it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, I'm, I'm wondering if, if we at GBOS could ask GHCC to, to come up with a, deliberate this at their, at their next meeting so that it's on their agenda at the next meeting, and advise us on, on the RTP, on this RTP that we're asking them to, to, for, that they should, we're hoping that they recommend to us that they need to get a RTP or a RFP put together. So I'm wondering if we can ask them to deliberate this at their next meeting and, and get back to us.
Thank you. I think that is something we can always ask for them to put things on the agenda. Jennifer?
So I'd like to propose a motion. We tabled this. We have a huge agenda tonight, and we're, and so I would like to see that we tabled this and ask GHGC to revisit it, and we put it on our agenda for next.
There's a new motion?
Well, there's actually a motion on the table now that we hadn't voted, so we need to deal with that first, the amendment.
Right. Thank you. So we can't really do anything else. We're still in discussion of this other, of this motion on the floor until someone's ready to call for a vote and second it, or withdraw the motion. I, or we, we keep, we're going to almost get to an hour on this item.
So right in front of us, we have an amendment to reduce the allocation from fifty thousand, forty thousand. We've obviously had many, several discussions since then, not been on that topic at all. I think we need to make a decision on that and then move back to the initial motion.
I would like to call for a vote, call vote, if I am able, but I don't know if I can do that.
I'll call for a roll call again.
The motion to call the question or roll call vote?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Thank you, Jennifer. Now it's seconded, so roll call, please.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Back to the main motion as amended.
Now we have the motion for allocating forty, encumbering forty thousand dollars to this process. We have not discussed yet how we're going to generate an RFP. I think there are several models for that, but that is most of the, other than it's the encumbering, encumbering the money so we can start this process. And again, I would call for a vote. I think we've discussed this for long enough.
I'm sorry. Could I please make a motion that we tabled this until next?
I, I think you can, but not until we're finished with the item, because that one was with the amendment, right?
Yes, but this is now on the main motion.
Yes. And the motion as we made on a while ago, so we need a second.
Right, so I'm, yes, so I am at, I am, I am making the motion that we table this for now.
So postponed until next month?
Postponed until next month and give GHGC a chance to talk about this more.
Okay. We need a second for either, I'm confused which, which motion.
So the clarity, I think, is on postponement, so we need a second for the postponement at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone able to second the motion to postpone?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, Kyle?
Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Mike Edgington?
Uh.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Uh, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Uh, motion fails, two-two. Back to the main motion.
And I think we've discussed this long enough. Let's move to a vote. So this is for the, uh, to include forty thousand.
Hey, uh, Jennifer?
Sorry. Who's chairing again?
Uh, he just made a motion on the.
And a motion to move to a vote.
Move to a vote. So we need a second thing? A second?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the motion is, this is the original motion, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The original motion that has amended.
As, as, yeah, original motion as amended to, to seek a RFP not to exceed forty thousand dollars for a housing implementation study.
Yeah, to include number forty thousand dollars from the, from the allocation we have in GHGC, um, yeah, sorry, in our, yeah, in our housing and economic development budget, and start the RFP process.
So if it's seconded, okay, thank you, Brian. Seconded. I'm ready for a roll call vote. Kyle?
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay.
You too.
Thank you. All right. Next is item number sixteen, and discuss the levees in Girdwood. Is it in the room, and do you have an update, or?
I could start. First, the California Creek. So we did receive word on Friday that HLB will provide funding for the engineering and design for the active erosion on the California Creek levee, protecting Town Square. So we're hoping for a PO this week, so we can get that going and, and try to get that process moving along. So that basically will give a full design set out and a cost estimate to repair it. We don't know where the construction money is going to come from at this point in time.
So that serves as an update for tonight?
Yes.
Taking action?
No, should update.
All right, thank you. Moving on, skip seventeen, eighteen, onto twenty. No?
There's a second part to this.
Oh, see.
Levees.
The Glacier Creek, California Creek, Turgidarm levee, protecting Old Girdwood.
Senator, will you answer? I can just, really, really briefly, I know that, again, that everybody, all the members of GBOS, at least, were at the last LUC meeting where there was a great presentation about it, Amanda has since expanded on that, so I would encourage anybody in the community who is interested in this to definitely reach out to her. She's got all kinds of information that won't fit in, all of which will not fit into the meeting tonight, some of which hopefully will. But if, if, there's a broad amount of information that she has about the watershed drainage, levee, et cetera, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that she's currently seeking a letter of support to initiate a watershed management plan for Glacier Creek, and that is the, that is the nutshell.
Margaret?
So I think that this item is actually number nineteen, I think, that we had, because of the way all of this evolved, we had the levees in general. California Creek is now resolved, and I think that the Glacier Creek suggestion is actually coming up in the following agenda item, which is really easy to move into, but I, I think that we should do that.
I think it is a land use study, though, and this is a watershed management initiation, so.
We're still pursuing the land use study, too?
Yeah, there's separate things.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And has this one been then to LUC? Because as all business here, that puts us in an awkward position without having gone.
Yeah, I put another request together at the meeting, it was Thursday, but did we make? That was at land use, right? Land use committee meeting, yeah, I said that we needed, I don't know if we made a motion during that meeting, though, to request the watershed management.
Uh, we can pull it up.
Didn't.
See.
I think if they're two separate topics, then.
Yeah.
I'm not there, and I'm sorry if it was me, but.
Actually, I think that's right. We did not request watershed management plan, a letter of support at the, at the land use committee meeting, so it's probably in our desk right here tonight. So technically, you need to ask next month.
Okay.
That, and, and we'd have it as a line item in this.
Yeah.
And I did see the separate number nineteen.
Okay.
About the use. So we look to the recording or your presentation, land use, to learn way more about number sixteen. Anything else there without cutting you off? No, Jennifer?
No, just that HLB obviously canceled the meeting this coming month. Um, there's a lot of collaboration going on right now, which is silly, assuming the reason for their cancellation. Uh, there's a lot of entities, all the government and landowners are looking to be attending these next meetings. Uh, I have been told it will be on the agenda by Murkowski and Hagercham.
Okay, thank you. So if that is fine, we'll go to number nineteen.
Yeah, that's great. I wasn't entirely clear what you, what you said at the end. I wasn't entirely clear what you said at the end there about the Ombudsman and Murkowski. I'm not quite.
Yeah, they sent me emails confirming that it'll be on HLB's next agenda, that's supposed to be.
Sorry, confirming what will be on the?
The letter.
The letter. Sorry, thank you. I wasn't clear.
Okay. Okay. Now we're ready for nineteen. Uh, that is the request to pursue HLB municipal code requirement to initiate land use study in the, about. That was from land use, right?
Yes.
And quickly, would you like to just say what the action is you'd like?
Yeah, so the action is, I would like a letter of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, requesting HLB to be compliant with municipal code title twenty-five forty point oh-two-five C.
Thank you.
And I'll pull up land use. This was passed at land use.
Yes. Business, we just need a motion, and then supervisors to work on the letter if it's passed.
I will so.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Any comments from anyone? We have heard this for twenty-two months, so it's land use. I don't think it would hurt to send a letter to HLB.
Oh, yeah, I've got, so. There's a, there's, there's several complexities around this, which I'm still trying to understand. So I heard today that there's a, that the municipality doesn't have control over land that the municipality owns. It's, it's tied to past sort of covenants with the DNR, which is very classic, into that. So that's one thing I'm understanding, because that essentially has really huge implications for everything. I think that's one aspect we need to understand for a better, probably, before we write a letter. The other thing is that in multiple times in the past, including during the whole discussion, whether we agree with it or not, the municipal attorney, or municipal planning department and municipal attorneys have asserted that, that they have land use plans, and they've met this through other mechanisms. Now, we can disagree, and maybe what we do is reiterate disagreement. I think we're not going to get very far if all we're saying is we disagree with municipal attorney advice. I think we have to have something more solid than that. So again, that requires a little bit, quite a bit more work. So I think we need to, we need to sort of have a better understanding of exactly what we ask here is, and exactly what the justification here is, and I'm not there yet. So I'm not sure what the best mechanism to move forward is here. I don't think we're ready to write a, to write a letter yet. Maybe we need to, a work session, maybe we just need to individually allocate someone to go into this and dig into it further. But I don't feel we're quite ready to take this action in a way that's going to be effective.
Maybe a clarification on that? So, okay, so land use studies is a very generic term that you use in environmental natural resource management. Land use plans at the federal level, they're called resource management plans. Also, sometimes they can call, be called an IAP, an integrated activity plan, or an environmental impact statement. This is, in that federal level, this is known as the NIBA process. Examples of this would be like the National Petroleum Reserve, Chuck Chee-Cee, and also there's a Cobuck Sewer Peninsula, RMP, so Resource Management. At the state level, land use plans are called area plans. That's why the nineteen ninety-five Girdwood Area Plan was a area plan, called that, was because our ultimate guidance government entity is DNR. So, but at the municipal level, all they call them is just land use plans. Land use plans always have natural resource management, environmental hazards to be identified, and protection of property life is really what they really come down to. So what's within Title twenty-five, it actually explicitly lays out what is to be in the land use plan, so there's no other alternative connotation that you can be taking. Uh, this links, plays out A through F, the, the different things, and they literally are natural hazard identification. So what's nice about that code is that it's explicitly telling you what should be in that plan. It leaves no room for variation. Thank you, Amanda. Well, if I was working on this letter, I would turn on it, but. It could be done, if someone could dig into it for the next month. There's not a time frame. Jennifer?
Oh, okay. You know what? I would, could I, could I move here the, I'm, sorry. I am making a motion here that we also tabled this until next month. It occurs to me that with Kelly coming on, this is all over her bailiff leg. Again, she's particularly good at this. And so I would say could we table this for a month till then we have the supervisors studying some of this?
We'll withdraw the first motion instead of amending it. You'll withdraw it and just say, move to table. Do we have a second for tabling this?
Second, postponed next month.
Okay. Any further discussions? And objections? We'll go by assent with that. This will be tabled until next month's agenda. Thank you, Jennifer. And we're not doing number twenty. It was covered in reports. The twenty-one is the AWU projects. Mike?
Yeah. There's a faded map. Is that ready?
New porn. Is what you want. On this. Yeah, we'll get that in just a second.
To me, yeah.
So.
Have some rough notes in there.
The original that was shared, and then if you go into the file.
So starting, just a short briefing here of what, where we are. So. There's a couple of things that have, like, as you, as most people probably know, we have sewer across most of the valley, and we have water on the eastern valley, but not the western part of the valley. There's, AWU check, number of years ago, a couple of years ago, AWU changed the way that projects can be funded. This required, I believe this required a, uh, work with the RCA at the state level, and various other things. But the two, so they changed the way that projects can be funded. It used to be that a project had to, when a project was funded, there was a levy on construction process. So people who benefited from the project had to start paying for that project as soon as the project was completed, or constructed. They now have another option of when the project is grant funded, there's a levy on connection process. So you don't have to pay anything towards the improvement until you actually connect to the system. So the costs are all fixed when it's constructed, but the, the, the costs to property owners aren't started. They're based on the cost of construction, but nobody has to pay anything if they don't connect the system. And that's a big change in the way the projects were done in the past, and definitely one of the changes from when the water system was originally built in Girdwood. So that's one change. And the other thing is, there's a bunch of grant opportunities available now for a window of the next couple of years, which probably won't be available after that, and haven't been that available in the past. So there's more money available in grants right now, mostly, but not exclusively, from accident twenty-one and twenty-two, inflation, construction, investment, job. So there's more money available, the initial very high. So there's more money available, the initial very high, um, very high importance projects have mostly been funded, according to A W. Um, and it's what's happening now is the projects which in the past were slightly hard to fund because they weren't at the sort of critical level, never got funded. Now there's this op, there's an opportunity to, um, to get funding for projects which aren't the extreme critical. Um, and when you look at the issues in Gerwood, we probably fit, uh, within those criteria. So there's a reasonable likelihood of getting grant funding. Uh, so the two big changes, how, how the project's paid for. Um, if they're for a grant, we don't have, nobody has to pay until they connect to the system, and secondly, they're available till the month. Um, we have a number of issues, uh, there's a number of problems in, uh, the areas of the community that do not have mains water. Everyone relies on wells. Wells are always reliable. Um, there's definitely more development going on. Whenever there's an earthquake, there's impacts, uh, some systems, again, all of this costs impacts. We do not have the, uh, we have, as we heard earlier from, um, fire chief, there are no hydrants in the area uh, west of Glacier Creek, so that increases the, uh, the cost for home insurance, and I don't know if you've looked recently, but home insurance really, you know, got very, very large in the last couple of years. It's grown significantly. Um, so having a higher default cost because of no hydrant is also a problem. So there are a bunch of reasons, uh, why this is a good window to, um, to look at a project to add into A W's capitalist, a project to expand the water system in Gerwood. Um, we go to the next page. A W did some work on this. We've had some initial discussions, sorry, not the next page, the, uh, the other one. Yep. So this is hot off the presses today, actually generated by A W, um, internet, you listen, go to it. Um, so A W put together an initial project, um, plan and estimate. Um, what the full proposal would be is four parts. A transmission line from where water currently finishes, which is, uh, basically at the end of the, um, underneath Glacier. There'd be a transmission line that goes from there. Uh, there would be a distribution system within the my roads. Uh, the next part would be another phase which would extend the transmission line. Transmission systems, hydrants, uh, reasons, but this way it's partly because there are various cutoffs and different buckets of different funding sources have the influence. Into buckets that have a good chance of winning. Um, and it's only.
I think after three.
It also splits it, so, um, also splits it so we can phase this in various ways. You could do the both transmission lines first and then you do the distribution, or you could do one transmission distribution within, um, my roads and then do the next distribution and so later things. So it's, it gives you maximum flexibility for applying for different. Uh, for different funding sources and different. So this is kind of the proposals in front of us, and the ask of the board supervisors is to, uh, pass a resolution. I have drafted the resolution, but A W wanted to run, go through and, uh, and sort of just approve it, maybe add some details. They have that lot of opportunity to do that yet. So I think what we'll do tonight is just present this. Answer some questions, and then on the next meeting, we should have the resolution in front of us, and hopefully we'll, but we can wait until that. So this is kind of the, it doesn't guarantee anything happens. What this, what this will do, when we pass the resolution, if we pass the resolution, is to get this project added to A W's capitalist and go through and start applying for grants. But it's individual. That's what we ourselves, uh, maybe reach out to legislators, legislators, uh, federal level. Um, and also potentially other funding sources, uh, that we as a community maybe. But we'll start the grant application process and put this on the capitalists. And that gets us into the queue.
For process, would someone motion to, uh, extend the meeting?
We've to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we will work, keep working at it, facts from that. Um, thank you, Mike, for doing all this work and A W, that's great that the resolution is also ready to go and A W would like to take a look at it. Um, Jennifer.
Just real quickly, uh, is there a reason that this, uh, didn't go to land use?
Um, not particularly. I mean, we could have put it in land use. We just got this mapped today, so it would have been ready last week.
Right, and we did have this, this is now whole business, and we did have this on.
We've definitely had it before, and I thought it had been discussed. Everyone. Threat land use as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, we're into land use. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. They have grant access right now.
The, normally the, um, the grant applicant, they start doing the capital, try and get capital in October. I think they might delay a little bit this year, but, uh, which case, if you know them, I think there are some questions about what happens in the, in the general election. Um, so basically we have next, next month will be, this month will be ideal, next month will also be okay. Pass this, so it's not time critical. We have to do it tonight, but we need to do it in the next couple, few weeks.
Well, thank you. Hopefully the time spent on tonight helps us move through it smoothly, the time that it's on next agenda. Uh, moving on, I'm unclear, number twenty-two is getting, uh, timed tonight. No. That's great. I have a, it's X. Number twenty-three, G A C requests for not to exceed seventy-five hundred for grant writing for an E P A community change grant application. Obstruction in Glacier Creek. Would like to.
I can start this. Um, so this is a, um, this is a grant, I understand, for a, um, E P A community. This is a request for funding to, um, resume, we're opening up an R I P for, um, a grant writer to produce an E P A community grant application. The grant itself will be for somewhere around, I think a million plus, um, to do a study on gravel extraction and the impact on the watershed in Glacier Creek. Um, so that's what the request is. I will hand over to, actually, Matt, if you have anything, could you come up to the microphone if you have? Um, and, uh, I'm sure Brett's doing it. So I'll hand it, hand it over to the, uh, the co-chairs of the G T C to say more.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still online, unless Matt was in the room, I didn't pick up on that.
I'm, I'm, I'm here, Brett, but go ahead, go ahead and kick it off.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, very good, so, um, yeah, so this is to, uh, engage with the, uh, hydrologist and, uh, produce a grant, uh, application package. We're on sort of, this one is on sort of a tight timeframe, uh, for the end of November deadline, so. The concept here is to apply for the, uh, E P A Community Change Grant Program, uh, for a more comprehensive Glacier Valley, um, watershed management approach. Um, and, uh, the primary aspect of that would be flood, uh, risk, uh, mitigation, continuity to economic activity, um, and a lasting system that, uh, could, uh, produce perpetual output of material, uh, that would assist in the, you know, bolstering of infrastructures such as roads, uh, levies, uh, so on and so forth. And then the spoils to which, uh, could potentially from building materials and reducing the cost of land development in the valley. So that's the concept. We hope to spend, uh, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars to put this package together and get it turned in by the end of, uh.
Thank you, Brett. Anything to add, Matt?
No, I think Brett did. Again, this is just another way we're trying to approach lowering the cost per square foot to build in the valley.
Great.
Just from a procedural aspect, maybe for the committee to consider is getting proposals in advance. Um, since this is over the five thousand dollar threshold, uh, if we want to go through R I P process, that can be very lengthy. Um, it's committee selection and all that. If we have proposals from people that maybe there's a, a outline put out to what you want the kind of the person to do to write it, um, and then we get proposals back from them. If we have three of them, then that would help us go through the purchasing process, uh, more streamlined, um, and, and make that work. So, uh, the one thing we're encountering is it's, uh, mid-September, rocking into October, November, and this, December, you get nothing done with purchasing because everybody shuts down for the month of December, as we were finished out the calendar year, um, in the holidays. So, so the timeline is getting short to finish out the year. Um, but it is approved tonight, what we would do is take that seventy-five hundred and move it into the capital account. Because we would consider this the capital project, and then, uh, wait till we figure out who the contractor is, and then apply the money to that contract. So there's some ways to look at this and strategy of how to pay them, so just want to give you some points.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike?
Well, I, I missed the, uh, I think the last word Brett said, which was when this has to be submitted by.
November.
Did, what, when in November? Is it like the first of November or the last day of November?
So, uh, November, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair allowed, um, November twenty-first is the application deadline. And then I wanted to, uh, also kind of separate that part of this effort is with a hydrologist. Um, and part of this effort is with a grant writer to assemble all of that and put together some of the things that we need. So it's potential that it could be, it, that there's, kind of, there's two different sort of functions here that we're trying to accomplish. So Kyle, if there's, uh, some latitude in that, uh, maybe we can take this offline and talk about how to execute on something like that if this were to pass.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm still struggling to understand it. So there's, there's two different contracts here. One is a hydrologist to do some analysis. Or to, to, to set, what, what's the purpose of the hydrologist and what's the purpose of the grant writer? I thought it was just a grant writer.
Right, so, uh, yeah, uh, through the chair, uh, like we kind of talked in our committee meeting, um, that it's, we've developed a scope of work, uh, that's going to be included in the grant application. And the fleshing out of that, um, what we would do if we won the grant, um, detail is part of the hydrologist, uh, function in order to make this all come together as a total management of the watershed. Then, uh, putting this together into a package and assembling that type of thing, uh, and meeting the requirements of the grant application, uh, would specifically be a grant writer effort, and so that has to all be done and turned in by the twenty-first of November.
Okay, so is there a way of doing that with one, one as the prime, and then, then maybe they can subcontract it to it? I, you know, the grant writer is the prime subcontractor to a hydrologist or vice versa, so it's just one contract.
I think, yes, maybe a tactical discussion on that, yeah.
But that would still be under seven, there would still be no more than seventy-five hundred.
That's the, that's the intent, yes.
Thank you. It took me a while to get there, thank you.
Bryce?
Yeah, thank you, went through the chair, and I think that from a tactical standpoint, um, some thoughts to consider are also if the five thousand dollar threat, if I understand correctly, the five thousand dollars is the threshold that you're allowed to spend capital in purchasing, is that correct?
Correct.
So with that being said, it might be tactically relevant to run them concurrently, since I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, G T C, but they can be run concurrently.
You mean as individual contracts?
Yes, under five thousand.
Yes.
And that would be the quickest tactical way of doing it in line. Okay, thank you, the time trip, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, any other discussion before this, it's, uh, motion? This, we don't have a motion, but we.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Jennifer. We have first to motion. You have a second?
The motion was.
Oh, sorry, the motion is to approve this, um, this not to exceed the seventy-five hundred dollars total, regardless of how it gets split, to accomplish what this is said for together, or however it works out for this, uh, E P A Community Change Grant.
Okay, we have second from Mike for the application. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so again, the thing that, the thing that makes me concerned about this is, um, this is a one piece of many. Uh, that we need to, uh, deal with the, the hydrology of, uh, the hydrology of Gerwood. Um, and this seems very focused on one particular aspect of gravel, which is the important part, but it's one aspect of many. Um, obviously doesn't, people touch, uh, any aspects of, um, the drainage system we have here. Um, I don't sure how it's going to relate to, hopefully it will address indirectly, uh, some of the issues around floodplain mapping. Uh, but we've got issues around floodplain mapping, we've got issues around drainage, we've definitely got issues around, uh, around gravel. This is a, an ask for a multi, or at least a million, I think, I think it's something about one and a half million minimum. Uh, project to do one aspect of that without any of the others, without having a mechanism to do any of the others. And we definitely can't allocate anything like that money, uh, to the other things that are equally important. So this seems to be like, probably a long shot in order to get the grant at all. And, um, if we do get that grant, then it's a very large amount of money to deal with one small component of the problems we have in front of us. So I think this probably is worth trying, but it's, it's, again, that's what it is. This isn't necessarily getting us anything. It's definitely not getting us a particular output. This is, this is, um, this is spending seven and a half thousand mo, dollars for the hope that we may receive something out of it. Um, and not necessarily receiving something out of it that's the highest priority or the most important of the issues facing us, in just the hydrology.
Any other comments? Uh, ready for a roll call then? Tell him your comments.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington? Um, Jennifer Windard?
Yes.
Uh, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next, twenty-four, G T C request for T B O S Resolution of Support for Application R T P twenty-twenty-five Grant of two hundred thousand with ten percent service area match. The Suspension Bridge Project.
Yes, so we are, uh, gonna be seeking a R T P grant this year, and, uh, we're looking for the support of the, uh, board, uh, to, um, back our applications.
I think I might have forgotten to put our own public notice in. Yeah, there you go. Well, there you go. Anyway, um, yes, we're, we can maybe find it from last month, but we updated it just a little bit. Anyway, our hope is to spend the money on labor. We are trying to write the grant, uh, rather broadly because, um, it's possible that the funds will be needed toward labor for the interpretive center versus labor for the bridge itself. But if the bridge needs the money, we want to have that flexibility. So we're looking at doing it broadly, and, um, now that we have received notification that the last year's grant cycle has come through, we're feeling more optimistic about buckling in and working on that, um, I think, August.
Thank you. While there, we, we have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, prove, uh, to promote a resolution support for the application, uh, R T P twenty-twenty-five. Uh, grant twenty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars with ten percent subscription. Work of Suspension Bridge.
Thank you, Jennifer.
One question to start, that the twenty thousand match, that, does that come from capital or does that come from?
We already have it.
Sorry?
We already have it.
Is that from donations or?
Yeah, you know, what do we have in the project right now? It, it, we already have five hundred thousand encumbered, so we'll just apply it towards that grant.
Yeah, that's all right, come, it's all right, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. I don't know where my public notice has gotten. It is publicly noticed, uh, at the three normal posting sites, and it's also up at the four locations on the way to the, um, site. And you should be hearing about it on K E L and hopefully in the turning in news.
Great.
So why I didn't get it in here, I couldn't possibly tell you, but.
Probably saw it in eight different places, so. I was here. If there are no other comment, I will pop for a roll call. Vote for this one. Ready, Kyle?
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Windard?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Great. Good job, everyone. Thank you, Margaret and Kyle, for working on that. Now we're into our new business, and some of this could be completed perhaps through email. But let's look at the agenda topics. Does anyone have any suggestions for the M O A T B O S quarterly meeting, October twenty-eighth, four P M?
Sorry. Uh, just seeing what we had on here.
I didn't, um, put anything in. I mean, we have a new, new administration. We had just met with the old administration. Or we just had introductions with the new administration at our last one. At our next meeting, we can look at what we talked about at that time. Um, something that I thought might come up today and that you guys mentioned was perhaps meeting the Chief of Police, or maybe there were some other people, but you would like to be introduced. Maybe there are some other people that you would like to be introduced to. I think that the best use of those meetings is for really targeted discussions. So, so in our agenda setting, we should specifically state what it is that we're hoping to learn or action that we're hoping to take. Guidance that we want to receive.
Mike?
Suggestions, the, I think we're, we're always going to want to meet H L B, so I think we have a couple of topics, particularly land transfer. That came up last time and I'd like to hear at least an update or. Status on the land transfer situation. Because again, we, we heard there needed to be a department. Land is being transferred to Girdwood Parks and Recreation, although it is not a department, as I understand. The other issue, I think we do have something on the police side, which is the use of alcohol tax. Goodwood either for training here or services provided. Can get some more specific details in place for me to publish the agenda. Okay.
With the H L B, I would also add an update on industrial park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Emma, they're going to have an update by the end of this month for that project, so they will. Hopefully have something to say by the end of October. But might not, we can ask for the update. Seven great. And I agree with the alcohol tax as well, considering the AR that the assembly passed last week that Randy mentioned. Okay, anything else? Brian?
Thank you. Kind of to pile on what, what Mike was talking about, since we'll have H L B around and perhaps even Bill Falsy will be around there. It might be a good time to also talk about initiating the land use study.
Thank you.
Get some more and just get some more detail about how we're, what we're going to get out of that, out of that study and, and if. If it's going to have support from the municipality.
AWU hope it be necessary.
What about, and also adding to what Brian just said. Having, having the hydrology of the valley be on the, the agendas.
Yeah.
Levy?
Like levy issues, say, for example. Right, and we do have a request coming down the line. We'll see how this shakes out because we're going to revisit this, right, our agenda. But I, I do know that Amanda was also mentioning having asked and requesting a hydraulic gauge station at the railroad trestle or some other things. And so I would like to have it as a placeholder, hydrology of the valley, and then we can suss out a little bit more exactly next month, based on hopefully what, get more information in the next.
Yeah, I think that's the push to do a remap of the thing.
Yes.
Which is.
Okay. Like a good list. All right, are we ready for number twenty-eight? It's probably an announcement based on conflict in November.
Yeah, we're going to look at rescheduling that GBOs meeting to November twenty-fifth as it collides with Veterans Day.
That's coming up. Thank you.
That's land use that would be moved from the eleventh to the eighteenth. I think so.
Pretty much everybody moves other than. GHGC, GHGC still fits on the day before election day, but election day throws the first wrench in with trails, so everybody bumps down a week. What it does do is put GBOs the week of Thanksgiving, which isn't ideal, but. We can't, we use another weekend. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. I've been working on it last month already. Number twenty-nine, the liquor license renewals. Just an announcement, basically.
Yes, and sorry, that's in the packet here. Just a update.
That's the very end, last page.
It is the last page.
Maybe I lied. I lied. I'm sorry.
Well, then it lists all the licenses.
Yeah, so it's page seventy-nine and eighty. Sorry, I forgot about. Presentation in there. So we haven't received any comments. Not, no negative, no nothing with regard to the liquor licenses that are coming up in twenty-twenty-five. This is kind of a two-part action. The first part is to make people aware that if they have something to say, they should bring it. And then if there's protest that GBOS wants to take, then we can initiate that process. What happens then after that time span has concluded is that we move forward to kind of the blanket letter of non-objection. That then I send out to everybody as the liquor licenses come up. So if there is going to be any kind of protest to it, it needs to be received no later than October fifteenth. So we're in good timing for that. I have had some resistance in the past to the letters of non-objection that are written the year prior, so. I guess we could think about waiting, but I don't know. I kind of don't mind testing people's ability to understand that it was just fall. So we can keep going on the current timeline, too.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret, for your work there. I think that wraps up the new business.
Thank you for your job.
And seconded, my Jen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.